And welcome to the school board meeting for June 15th, 2020. I'm calling the meeting to order and at this time we will do the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, at this time, Dr. Whitehead, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. I'll now call the roll. Mrs. Broker? Mr. Counselor Jerome?
Here.
Ms. Reed? Ms. Reed? I see you. Oh, she's waving. Ms. Sheamus?
Here.
Mrs. Soto?
Present.
Mr. Weiss?
Here.
Ms. Emanuel?
Here.
Madam President, we have six board members present.
Dr. Whitehead, Dr. Serini just joined.
Very good. We now have seven board members present.
Thank you. At this time, you'll see projected announcement of meetings, the ones that have been held and ones that are upcoming. So far, we are continuing with virtual meetings as information continues to come out regarding when and what we can do. We will be taking into consideration potentially moving back to in person, but we want to make sure that we do so thoughtfully and allow for enough space for everybody to be socially distant. And also keeping in mind the costs that may be occurred in moving to an in-person if we should need to change locations, change equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So that is definitely an ongoing discussion. Our understanding is the soonest we could do that is July 1st. However, we want to make sure ultimately it is very thoughtful however that we may go about it. And at this time, we will open to public comment. Public comments that have been emailed to boardmeeting@pasd.com will be read by Dr. Whitehead up to three minutes, asking that folks email in their name, where they're from, and then their comment. We will have an additional public comment at the conclusion of the meeting. So if throughout you have a public comment that you would like read at the conclusion, please do send one email in. We will read just one and it will be limited up to three minutes. But again, boardmembers or boardmeeting@pasd.com, please email your comments in there. And at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Whitehead. Thank you.
Can I just add something real quick? Sorry, I have my hand up. Um, just the board executive session to, can we change that to make sure it's noted that it's virtual? Because um, it was and it's not listed on the meetings of the meetings that were held.
Oh, thank you very much. We'll make sure we get that on here.
Alright, sorry. Continue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Um, we have three public comments thus far this evening. I will now read them. The first is from Mr. John Maras, but I'm gonna get a drink of water real quick. Apologies. Uh, this is from Mr. John Maras, Schuylkill Township resident. I'm requesting that these written comments be included in their entirety with the official minutes. He has five points this evening. The first, tonight, the board is voting on 2021 school budget with an estimated increase of 1.8%. As I've said previously, this administration has failed to give a true budget presentation since this began months ago. Presentation should have included three columns to facilitate comparison 1920, 2021, and 63019 actual. A reader could then see where changes are taking place and be able to ask questions on spending. The way it's been presented to the public, the numbers are not transparent and are meaningless. You needed a starting point. I grade this budget a D for lack of transparency, a meaningless presentation. You wonder why hardly any comments are made on this budget by the public. Two, while this district, why is the district hiring a director of finance at a salary of $165,000 and having a controller position in the new budget of $80,000? These amounts do not include retirement or benefits. Please compare this to the 2019, 2020 budget for same two positions. Number three, due to the current economic situation from COVID-19, any tax increase could be devastating to many households. To have a zero increase or to save on expenses, the administration, for those earning more than $150,000, should we do third salaries by 20%? Dr. Fagley, who earns $249,000 per year, would forego $49,800. That would cover the estimated expense that the district paid to forensic court that the public has not seen. Two, in this agenda, an approval of an agreement in Weststrom Development will be discussed. Last week, it was on the agenda without discussion. I was told it was for executive session as this was a contract negotiation. I disagree. This was an issue about Florida and tax abatement, not a contract purchase of land or an agreement. This was a tax issue for land development. I think that's all taxpayers. There should have been a public discussion so taxpayers would know the position on each member. Five, last comment, continue to double check information that this administration publishes or fails to review. The meetings that are listed on this agenda are held as held on June 3rd. Those meetings were actually held June 8th due to the power failure. Thank you, John Maras. Next public comment is from Ms. Longo. Once again, I'm asking why so many questions asked by members of the public during these broadcast meetings are not being answered? Not a single question asked via email. Because of this lack of transparency and ethics, I'm forced to submit questions to your right to no request. It's extremely disturbing. Sadly, the three budget meetings I was able to either attend or watch, two did not even include a presentation of the budget. One allowed misinformation to statements of facts. It is beyond concerning that this board seems unwilling or incapable of insisting on transparent operations and is going to allow employees and the board president to make untrue statements without challenge. It's a fact that several people have admitted during public meetings that conversations are going on outside of public hearing. To me, this seems to indicate sunshine laws are being ignored. Recent executive session labeled negotiation was about a tax abatement question. That is not a negotiation topic for an executive session. The deliberations and discussions must happen in public. This continued egregious behavior by this board is disturbing, as is the level of unprofessionalism and professional animosity and manipulation being used to reveal legitimate questions and concerns about how well we move forward in these difficult times. It is quite obvious no public questions or opinions matter. Anything that does not agree with the predetermined talking points and decisions is discounted, demonized as untrue or a gaslighting manipulation of the truth. This is a time where we need to have regular public discussions. Why has the community task force not been asked to meet no open forum? Not a single special public hearing on reopening our schools held or scheduled? The only forum advertised conversation for parents, not the public. I know the budget will be voted on and approved. It was likely discussed and decided in phone calls and emails outside of the public hearing. I also know that based on the past six months, no question asked tonight will matter or be answered. No concern taken seriously if it does not fit with the current group think. No new ideas will be considered, no suggestions discussed. This is not a public hearing. It is a public sharing or predetermined decision and that is how this is supposed to work. And this is not how it's supposed to be. Ms. Longo. And the last public comment is from Ms. Heidi Lee, parents of Schuylkill Elementary. Dear school board members, thank you for all the hard work that you do on behalf of our school district. It is time consuming and difficult work to be sure you are, particularly so during this time of COVID. As you consider budgetary issues at this upcoming meeting, I'd like to encourage you to please focus on sustaining our schools' teacher-student ratios at their current levels. We imagine that as budget constraints loom large, it would be tempting to not fill positions left open by teacher retirements or resignations. Leaving those positions vacant or discontinuing those lines might look like an excellent, simple, and practical way to save costs for next year. However, we think that not hiring new teachers would take a toll on the most important element of our school's mission, education. And I'm on those who work diligently to implement that mission on teachers. By not filling newly vacant teaching positions, the student-teacher ratio will rise. Our teachers are already tremendously burdened by having suddenly to retool their teaching to an online hybrid format and to accommodate the likely and significant changes that safety protocols will require of their teaching next year. Face-to-face contact with students, one of the greatest joys of teaching, will undoubtedly be reduced or diminished this upcoming school year. Increasing even further the time and attention that each teacher can devote to each student because of there are more students per classroom or more students electronically assigned to each teacher will undoubtedly have a negative impact on our schools, on excuse me, on our students' education and our teachers. If you must temporarily and painfully dip into the funds budgeted for our athletic and arts programs that will be necessarily smaller next year, worthy, valuable, and educational though those programs are, please do so. Students, classroom, education, and teachers must be our highest priority. Thank you, Heidi, Boba Heiser, and Michael Lee. That concludes all the comments at this time.
Great, thank you. Dr. Fagley, did you want to speak to any of those points?
Certainly, thank you. Beginning with the last series of comments about maintaining student-teacher ratio, please know we are working on maintaining this current student-teacher ratio. As an administrative group, we have not asked for an increase in that number and we do not plan to ask, excuse me, for an increase in that number. We're going to be working diligently over the next few months. We know we have to do some rescheduling and we are looking forward to continuing the public forums that we recently held on June 11th with our folks so everybody is aware of what is taking place. So to that point, there has been so far one public forum on the opening of schools and we expect there to be more, several more actually over the summer. The next one is actually scheduled for the 25th of June. There were two questions with regards to executive session and discussions that the board had in executive session and called negotiations. Yes, that is true. That was negotiations. There was talk about how we would make a counter offer. Tonight, you will see later in this presentation the full outcome of all the discussions that the board had. So a board is allowed to do negotiations in executive session, but as always, must disclose as the results of that when a decision is being made to the public and they are going to be doing so this evening. Because budgets, negotiations, I believe those are the ones that were questions that I have answers for right now. President Emanuel, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So at this time, we will move on to committee reports and first up is buildings and grounds. Mr. Counselor Jerome?
Thank you very much. Dr. Fagley, can I just ask you, maybe I missed it. Did you say how many people attended that first parent forum? I thought I remembered a significant number.
There was a significant number. Actually, I hadn't yet. I was saving that for a little bit later, but I'm having.
No, 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 don't, don't reveal the surprise. Keep it for later.
When it's fifteen, we'll talk about it some more.
I don't want to be the buzzkill. So, uh, on the building and grounds. So, um, the building and grounds committee met, uh, June 8th. Uh, no, I'm sorry, June, um, when, was that when we finally met because of all the postponements? I guess it was June 8th.
It was June 8th, yes.
Okay. Um, so we had two items up for board approval, one of which was a bid to awards the Keller Williams Realty Group for sale of district inactive properties. These are the East Pike Land property and the elementary school over on Second Avenue. It was determined by the committee that we would like the administration to go back out and seek other bids for that rather than to recommend moving forward. So that is what we are doing with that. Mr. Gibson, please feel free to jump in if there's anything you want to add to any of that. The other board approval item has to do with that same thing with the Keller Williams Realty Group for the kindergarten and East Pike Land properties. And, um, then we had committee discussions about a long-term lease-to-own contract for the restoration of the barn and farmhouse. And I believe we have some information tonight that I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Gibson to speak a little bit more about this and give us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Jerome. So what we put up from our discussion last week, the current lease that was put in place from 20, November 2019 to now expires at the end of this month. Due to the fact that most of the spring, we were out with pandemic and dealing with, with all of the ramifications for that, unfortunately, we just really haven't been able to deal and have the proper discussions needed surrounding this. So some discussion took place at that B and G meeting regarding extending that lease. What we're putting forward tonight for approval is an addendum to the residential lease of 10 Campbell Lane that was asked by some board members in the B and G meeting to parallel the Pot House Road. So it would go effective on, uh, on June 30th of this year and, and go to June 30th of 2021 with the expectation that in that timeframe, as well as Pot House Road, we would get, we would come to resolution on those two properties and find an ultimate direction.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Any questions or comments from the board? Anything anybody wants to ask?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're waiting for hand raises, but I will lower it.
Go ahead.
We're not voting on this tonight. We're voting on this next week, correct?
Yes. This is discussion, this is discussion time and we'll vote next week.
Super, thank you.
Is that all? Okay. Um, so, um, in addition to the pot house or the, um, the addendum that we got this evening, there was some discussion about the 33 Pot House Road property and, um, the appraisal value of the property and the work that has been done on the property. Discussions about, um, looking at, um, selling that property when, uh, when the time comes. And there was a robust discussion about that. Mr. Gibson, is there anything you would like to bring up about that discussion? I mean, we've, we've gone over this several times, so a lot of this is, is stuff that has been talked about in the past. You know, the, the current occupants did a lot of work on the property. Um, the last appraisal for the property was at 115. We, the district did some repairs, basically to make sure that the building was, uh, the, the house was secure. Replaced some siding and roofing. But, um, once the current occupants came in, they did the majority of the work. They renovated the house and replaced the existing radiator system with a new HVAC system. So, um, if and when we get to the point of selling this property, you know, we have to take all of that into account. Um, Dr. Serini?
So I, I just would like to have some clarification on how we're going to proceed with the the transaction or the paperwork for, for the proposed sale. I, just doing some pretty simple valuation myself. I believe that we may have a property that's much higher than the 115 plus cost of repairs that have been put in. And I just think we should be very mindful about what we committed to that's legally under contract. That's obviously, we can't, um, change that. That was agreed upon. But I, in reading it, I, I didn't get a clear indication of exactly, you know, that a price was determined in writing. So can we, do we, it was not in the prior meeting that was referenced. So I'm, I'm trying to find the terms of that lease. It's not in the portal. So if someone could pull it up and maybe, um, email it to me or, you know, we can, tomorrow, we can discuss it. But I, I think that we need to, if we're going to come up with a price, we really need to look at what the current market value is and what we've already agreed to, if anything. Because from what I've seen, I don't know that we actually have said this is what it's going to look like in writing. So again, I stated this last week and tried to find some documentation, but I'm still looking, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Weiss?
Thanks, Mr. Counselor Jerome. I'm trying to recall the conversation and I'm hoping you can refresh me. Um, I know during the conversation, there was some discussion about having another assessment done. Can you remind me where we ended up with that? Was that something we were going to look at? Or, um, was there another way? I guess I'm kind of paralleling, uh, Dr. Serini's question, but I was just kind of curious about an additional about appraisal. Now that this work has been done. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Gibson, do you have any information on that, where we ended up on that? And sort of what actions you've taken in the last week since we met?
Uh, we have not taken, uh, unfortunately, I haven't been able to get to this particular project this week. We've been focusing on the, the reopening and what that's going to look like. But I do recall that discussion. I don't, I don't know that we have any problem with that. The prior, the prior question by Dr. Serini regarding what we were going to sell it for. I don't, I don't know that we've decided on that yet either. I think that's, that's a discussion the board needs to have. Um, and the, the, the lesee is, is aware of that as well.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gibson. Mrs. Soto?
Um, real quick, um, just to refresh my memory, is this the same property that originally we considered for a life skills building?
It is.
Okay, so I recall we had the property assessed. It was assessed at 115. We had, um, we, we looked at how much it would cost to fix the property, to make it a life skills building and what the cost was. And I remember it being over a million dollars, so it was very high out of our price range on what we were looking to spend. So we now have a tenant there that's trying to fix the property, has already put in work on this property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so then I don't necessarily think we need another assessment because we already had an assessment done on the property when it was in poor shape. And if we were to have it assessed now, the value would go up and it would, it would go up with work that was done by this tenant already. So if the point is for the property to eventually be sold to this tenant, it doesn't make sense for us to assess it and then sell it for them at such a higher price when they've already put in the work on the property that was worth less, right? I, I just, I'm just trying to understand it in my head and I just, I, I don't think it's necessary to assess it again. I, I don't, not if they're, if they're already working on this property and doing what they need to make it their own. I, I think that we're fine. That's just my opinion on it.
Thank you. Dr. Serini?
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Jerome. You're absolutely right, Mrs. Soto. And we actually don't necessarily need to have a full-blown reassessment. What we could easily do is go back and, uh, validate the findings of the original valuation that was conducted and just use comps that would have been comparable to the original condition and make sure that the comps that were used for the valuation at 115, which I had, um, the other property on the other end on my radar. Some of you know, the Six Halliwell, and there is absolutely, I don't care if it's a teardown. Anything that's going to sell for 115 is going to be gutted down in a shell. So I believe that it would be worth, and I would be able to do this gratis, no charge to the board. I could pull up comps and say, here's what, you know, the comps were a year ago when they started for properties that were in that condition. And, um, we could kind of make an informed decision. It's not something that we need to go pay a professional, but I do think that any single home in Schuylkill Township, even the land alone, if the house is completely in disrepair, would be at least 115, if not more. So I'm just suggesting that we, if we're going to use that number of 115, that nothing else, we at least look at the comps. I have done a informal analysis, just looking at it, and I'm seeing a current value of 315, just what properties are selling for. So as a board, I would just ask that we, um, in our capacity, make sure that we look at the data. However, we want to get there. There's a variety of different ways. Certainly, the tenants have, in, in good faith, made the repairs, but we also, in good faith, would want to make sure that we're representing the, the interests of the district. And, um, I think we're working diligently to accomplish that. But the 115 to me just seems extremely low, extremely low. And I just want to be able to say that we've looked and evaluated the property, property in a way that is fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Serini. Uh, Mrs. Reed?
I just wanted to note, Ms. Soto and Dr. Serini, that after Ms. Soto said assessment, and it's not an assessment, it's an appraisal. I don't want people to think that we're talking about a tax assessment. They mean an appraisal of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Emanuel?
Thank you. I just wanted one quick clarification point. If somebody is turning in, tuning in for the first time, we're not talking about selling this property tomorrow for 115. That is, that is not the discussion here. This is an ongoing discussion regarding current tenants who are renting, who are also rehabbing the farm property that is in poor need of help and, um, something that we as a district cannot afford to do. So I just wanted to clarify that one point. We're not, we're not selling tomorrow. We're not listing it tomorrow. This is a lease agreement with this tenant who is also working on that secondary property. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Emanuel. Mrs. Ser, Dr. Serini?
Thank you, Mr. Counselor Jerome. To Ms. Ms. Reed's point, absolutely, um, it's, it's actually even not as, I'm not even asking for something as cumbersome as an appraisal. We could have a simple broker price opinion and I'm a broker and I'm happy to get, dig up the info and give it to us. I mean, it's no cost. It's very informal. It's just looking at the data a little closer. And then, um, to Ms. Emanuel's point, maybe think, when, when do we have to, um, contractually agree to a price or do we not need to do that? It's just something we're beginning to prepare for. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no further comment on that topic. And since that is not a voting topic, it's just a topic for discussion. We'll move on from there. Finally, just a couple of other things that we discussed. Work is ongoing at Barclay. We are beginning the, or the concrete work out front is being scheduled. And, uh, the painting in the building has begun. So we are doing, uh, doing our work there. As some people may know, Barclay is also a COVID testing site or was a COVID testing site into June. And, uh, back when the primary was held, we did hold, um, voting in the district buildings. Back, I guess that was June 2nd, so those things did occur. Dr. Serini?
I, I just was wondering if we needed to vote on the, um, property, the single-family home on Pot House for next week. We're just getting to prepare. Thank you. Thank you.
No, it's not a voting item. Yep. Mrs. Emanuel?
Uh, one quick additional piece on the COVID testing. That is ongoing. We don't know how long and we're playing the fun game of which days, but that is ongoing. So definitely keep an eye out for folks. Right now, it is, um, active COVID testing. The hope is from the county that it will eventually be antibody testing as well, but we do not have that at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Reed?
What color was chosen for the paint for Barclay?
Mr. Gibson, do we have an answer on that? I, I know we were still discussing it.
Those, those discussions are still ongoing. They, the primer is in the, basically the color it once was. The, the painters are, are in-house painter who's quite experienced in this trade. You know, the, the color really goes with the period of the building. Um, I, I know there's some, there's some thoughts of what to do, like bright colors, but we're, we're kind of looking at maybe murals on top of that for putting a neutral color throughout the building.
Thanks. I heard Mr. Counselor Jerome say painting and I thought that a color had been chosen already. Thank you.
No, that's fine. So, so suffice it to say, it will not be a Jackson Pollock painting.
Correct.
Um, that I believe is all for the, uh, building and grounds from last week. And I will turn the meeting back over to Mrs. Emanuel.
Thank you. Next up is the curriculum meeting from June 2nd, which was thankfully not affected by the storm, like Buildings and Grounds and Finance. We began, um, the minutes were not available at that time, but they have been since sent out to committee members. So if you have any concerns or edits, please send them along to myself. We then discussed, um, world language. That was a goal for the superintendent and for the district that we implement a world language program based on the recommendations and acceptance of the world language task force. However, with the unfortunate last four months, um, we did have to postpone that. So we reviewed the recommendations from the task force, which I greatly appreciate and acknowledge. So we reviewed the recommendations from the task force, which I greatly appreciate, and know that there was a lot of work that went into that from multiple volunteers. And one of their recommendations, for example, was hiring a first-step coordinator. So someone who could help facilitate what things would look like, what staffing would look like, et cetera. And what we will do is we will begin these conversations again first thing in the fall. We do have to prioritize working on our pandemic plan and getting students back in our buildings and making a more robust online program and doing all of that hard work, which has a much more higher level of emergency. So we will begin the world language work, restart the world language work apologies in the fall. Next, we discussed STEM and springboard. Springboard, for those who do not know, is an AP, pre-AP curriculum that we've had at the middle school level, which we are eliminating. However, we are embedding it into the rest of our content. So where will be an added emphasis in our ELA classes and other areas where we can embed this type of information. We are going to be focusing on math and STEM revision. And ELA is currently on hold. Again, a lot of our schedule has gotten postponed, pushed back, altered due to current circumstances. So we'll continue that work. It just did a little different timeframe. For summer programming, we have multiple programs that we are running and some that we are not. So we are doing the stepping up program, which is a virtual program. We are also still in discussions regarding ESY, our summer programming for students with special needs. We will be bringing in students when, if we can. However, there is going to be some students at least who are going to have a virtual component. And this is all going to depend on how things progress, whether we end up in green, whether we, fingers crossed, but hopefully do not revert. You know, so it is an ongoing discussion that has continued with the curriculum department, utilizing guidance from the Health Department and the State Department of Education. Ms. Broker, you have a question, comment? Ms. Broker? Hand went down. I will continue.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, as far as the world language component, I know we had talked about, and yeah, I have a bunch of notes about when we talked about it last year, bringing it back to the elementary school and also making improvements at the high school level. And so is that just, is there anything being done in connection with having, you know, having like a meaningful language program at the elementary school level for the kids that are there now as opposed to waiting for, you know, the first kindergarten class? And also for the high school as well.
We won't have any modifications this fall. That's the discussion that we'll start as to how that looks and how can we meaningfully do it given the circumstances.
Is there any thought to, you know, if we are going to be online, I think it's probably going to be somewhat online. You know, there really are some wonderful online immersion programs. And I know that that takes some administrative, you know, red tape to get approval of, but you know, like my daughter's learning French. Maybe some way to introduce something like that, incorporate something like that, as long as we're going to be online anyway. Just putting that out there as a possible way to bridge.
And I would ask you if you have a program that you're utilizing that you found successful. Forward that program name, website, et cetera, to Dr. Whitehead and he can include it in the considerations that are being made during the pandemic team discussions as far as how to move forward, what next year looks like and things of that nature. Okay. Dr. Serini?
Thank you, President Emanuel. I also wanted to echo that there are a plethora of open educational resources, OER, that are basically open licensed content and curriculum that we could use. Perhaps we could consider a small stipend to a teacher who would otherwise not, you know, have it as part of their curriculum and maybe offer it as some sort of a enrichment or something. Maybe we do, maybe look at the curriculum. I don't know. I guess my question could be for Dr. Whitehead. Is that something that perhaps you've already looked at and is there an opportunity to incorporate that at this juncture? Even if there, it's elective at this point or something, you know, after school or whatever. It's there. It's free and it even goes as far as educational standards that you can map it to education levels. I'm seeing middle and high school and they have all different lessons, lesson plans, activity labs. It's pretty, and a lot of times it's already set up in the form, formats that you can just load it right into Canvas. So just something to consider. Maybe there's, you know, someone who has interest and a willingness to check it out.
Dr. Serini, if you could send me that, what you're looking at, I'd be happy to take a look at.
And as a reminder to the public, we do have what's called option two. And option two does allow students to take college courses and apply them for credit. So some of these courses, you actually do get college credit for, Dr. Serini. And so if a student is interested and is moving on, yes, there's a way to actually incorporate it and have them receive credit. Credit, not degree, but credit towards their transcript.
Exactly, because, and I'm sorry for not raising my hand. I don't see anybody else's up, but exactly. And so if our students are able to find a college course, if they know maybe what they have in mind, even if it's a community college or a state school, they can articulate the learning outcomes. It doesn't matter. You can even use some of these MOOCs, the massive open online educational courses. There's, and they're offered by the Ivy Leagues, which is incredible. It's a teaser course, but you can pay a little nominal fee and get a certificate. So there's a lot of value with that. And to Dr. Fegley's point, it's mapping the learning outcomes to a college course. So absolutely, I'm in the process of digging up that link, Dr. Whitehead, while it's on my mind and I'll get it over. Thank you for looking into it.
And moving on, so we did spend quite a bit amount of time talking about our 2021 planning. However, unfortunately, that was about two weeks ago, so everything's changed since. We are still planning to offer, to Dr. Fegley's point, a full virtual option for families who choose to do so. We are still hoping that we are allowed to bring students back in school and we are still working on what that will look like. As of the middle, beginning of last week, there was more guidance that was shared by the state. So Dr. Whitehead, adding to his plethora of job descriptions, now has the title of pandemic coordinator and has created a pandemic task force that is comprised of multiple stakeholders. It is administration, teachers, staff, parents, professionals, who are going to be getting together virtually and having lots of conversations about all of the areas of concerns that we have. Getting students in the buildings, what does it look like for safety for the students, for the staff, for the faculty? What does transportation look like? Recess, specials, lunch, you know, we can go on and on and on. All these things unfortunately are moderately up in the air. We're looking at a multitude of options. But we continue to look at what is being released by the state, by the CDC, and incorporating it in terms of working towards the best learning practices. So while I have a summary, I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Whitehead to update everybody onto today's news.
Thank you, Madam President. That was an excellent summary, actually. You did a great job. So the pandemic team had its first meeting. And it's a very, it's an outstanding team. We also have some parents on there that are healthcare professionals. And their insights have been extremely valuable in those discussions. As you correctly pointed out in this manual, the key components of the health and safety plan is first and foremost. Those components, as you mentioned, concern the physical plant. A lot of parents have questions and have been asking about the physical cleaning and disinfecting and those areas and the operations in Mr. Gibson's wheelhouse. And Ken and his team or Mr. Gibson's team have really been addressing those areas. Social distancing, obviously, in connection both with transportation as well as classroom social distancing. Tomorrow, actually, the next three days, the administrative team will be meeting for three solid days. And they'll be doing some of the detail work with regards to what scheduling in terms of the AB schedule that may be required, the hybrid schedule, as well as the virtual academy that we're building that Dr. Fegley spoke about. And so after those three days are up this week, then the pandemic team will meet again early next week to review that work from the administrative team and ultimately make some final recommendations that will ultimately come to the board by June 22nd. So that is the process that is quickly moving. We have to move very quickly. And as you said, there's additional information that was, we came out with regards to sports and activities and spectator numbers, how many spectators you can have, can't have, practices, things like marching band rehearsals, those kinds of things. We're taking a look at and we'll be discussing the next three days and making some decisions. So by June 22nd, the board will have a draft of that plan.
Thank you. And I want to reiterate too, as parents who may be watching, the superintendent forums that have been mentioned, the one that we had last week and the hold on the 25th, will include more detailed discussions as we move along through this challenging process. Next item is cursive. We've talked a lot about that the last six-ish months. The administration came back with the recommendation that they can incorporate cursive at the third grade level using cursive without tiers program. We do currently have typing without tiers of the same manufacturer, not far off from what we're used to. And teachers who have their materials have access to those as well. And we will be beginning that in the fall with our third grade class. And then our final and only item for voting next week is the middle school summer reading list. We were waiting for it to be finalized. We voted on elementary and high school last month, but we will be voting this month on the middle school reading, summer reading list. So at this time, that concludes my report. And Ms. Soto?
Regarding the summer list, I think when we spoke about it, we, I believe the middle school list comes with the Reading Olympic list, if that's correct?
That is correct, from the CCI.
Okay. One thing, I don't recall what the elementary and high school list, like what books are on there. But one thing I want us to consider maybe for the future is making sure we have a diverse array of authors. I think it's important that we start broadening our horizons, especially now with a lot of the things going on. Just making sure that we have some good topics that are more relatable for kids. I know we, I think it'll be something I think we'll discuss more in curriculum, but just something to put in the back of people's heads as we go through creating these things. I just think it'd be great to have different authors from all over the world. So that's just my thoughts on it for our students. That's it.
Mrs. Emanuel, if I may, there's one item I did forget, I neglected to mention. I wanted to just inform the board. One of the areas that the administrative team is looking at and working with the teacher leadership in terms of preparation time. And so I just, we just wanted to make the board aware that we are looking, relooking at some of the in-service days and the timing of those in-service days. I know we've set the calendar, but we may be asking the board for a kind of a tweaking of that calendar next year with regards to, one of the things that we're talking about is trying to front-load, giving the teachers time for each marking period, give them a little time. So for example, front-loading the calendar a little bit, recent day, first marking period, putting a day or two in for that second marking period. So we just wanted to give the board, you know, just an awareness that we may be revisiting placement of the in-service days in the calendar. We haven't finalized it yet, but we just wanted to let everyone know.
And you would hope for a vote on that if that were to occur on the 22nd, correct?
Hopefully. We may not be ready by then, but just so people also know, we will still have 180 days of school next year. So that's not changing. It's just looking at the placement of days.
Thank you. Dr. Serini?
Glad to hear you mention that, Dr. Whitehead. It's certainly with online teaching going to have heavier work at the beginning to set everything up. So I'm thrilled to hear that the teachers will hopefully, this time around, have a bit of a reprieve. And, you know, we're beginning to think strategically. So that's wonderful. Glad to hear it.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that I think it's very appropriate that we front-load some of those training days. But we also need to keep in mind that some of the staff does not get paid on those training days if there's no classes. And so if we, one week with two training days within it, that would affect those employees, company mortisage and some of those folks. So just bear that in mind as you, as you look at how to distribute those days. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We'll now move on to finance and Ms. Soto.
Thank you. The first item we'll have for approval is our personnel items. I just want to make sure everyone has had a chance to look at that. And if they have any questions, just let me and Mrs. Rockwood know. I know that we did get one question and that was answered regarding some, it was on a on an approval of salary and that was clarified. So that was good. Item B is our standard approval of the disbursement of school district funds for April and May of 2020. And item two there is the acknowledgement receipt of the district financial reports for May 2020. And again, if anyone had any questions, I always implore you to just let me and Mr. Fazio know about these, of these, if you have any questions there. For C, we have business office items. The first one is the approval of a renewal of the food services contract with Witsen's. We should have an updated contract there for anyone who wants to review it and look at it. One of the things that Witsen's will be doing this year is they'll be covering our summer food program. In the past, it's been done, I forgot who did it before, but it wasn't Witsen's. But this year, they will be working with us on that and we'll be having food distribution. I guess I'll turn it over to Mr. Emanuel real quick to let, give us a quick update on that unless you have an update later in the report. I'm not sure about that. I thought it'd be a good idea just to give the public a quick update. If that's okay?
Do that, certainly. I can do that now and then we'll strike it later. No worries. So previously, it was the Archdiocese that did our lunches, but that was only for students who were currently receiving services in our building. This summer, well, actually, previous to Friday, we had been utilized, we had been outsourcing our food service during this time due to having the necessary waivers. We do now have them and that's why Witsen's is back in-house. And they will be providing our meals for the summer. The schedule will continue as is current. It's Mondays, Wednesdays, Fridays at our five locations. Each student who comes will receive two meals per day. And we do still have adult meals available and we are still providing non-perishables and some produce for families who are in need. So that service will continue throughout the summer, right up until we are, fingers crossed, hopefully, back in our buildings and then our students can get the food in school. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think one thing to add is that normally the summer food program is only for a few weeks. I believe it's just for through July. This is going to go straight through August to the beginning of school. So I think that's fantastic. And thank you all for your hard work with that. It's really appreciated. The next item I'm actually, is going to be a presentation that I'm going to pass over, I guess, to Mr. Fazio. And this is approval of a memorandum for the Wheatland property, which is by the Westroom Development. It's Phoenixville Luxurio Apartments. So I will pass this off to Mr. Fazio.
Thank you, Mrs. Soto. We've been, as you know, the board has been negotiating with the principals for Westroom. And you'll see the initial discussions, representatives of Westroom actually approached us back in October of 2019. And there's kind of a timeline specifically identifying the interactions that the district administration, then the district and board had with the principals of Westroom. You'll see, I'm certainly not going to read all the dates, but, you know, when we were first approached, when we approached Phoenixville Borough, the Borough had actually, it was aware of the letter request back in January. And you'll see discussions occurred at the March and April committee meetings. We countered and finally, we've, I think we've reached an understanding with the, again, the principals of Westroom. We requested that We requested that they run their suggestion of alerta by the county solicitor's office. And they were provided feedback from the county. They provided us a memo of understanding that we, the administration reviewed by our legal counsel. Our legal counsel made modifications to that memo of understanding and that memo of understanding is, is for your consideration tonight. It's important to note for the board, the, the vote, if you so choose to approve it, is simply that approval of a memo of an understanding with Westroom or CSW, I believe that's the actual company. And that's for them to move forward, basically saying we're supportive of alerta, but they have some hurdles and some steps to, to, to have approved, you, one of which is for the Borough to designate that area, alerta eligible. And then, and there would be approvals along the way, then it would come back to the district to actually approve of the actual alerta.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that? I see Dr. Sereni.
I actually had my hand up from the personnel report, so I can just briefly ask that question. And I had a question about something that Mr. Fazio hasn't touched on yet. So I don't have a question about LARDA. I can defer it and wait until we get through this and, or I can jump back, whatever your, your wishes.
Sorry. Let's, yeah, let's do this topic first and then we can go back real quick to, for the personnel question. I missed your hand being up.
It's okay. I only had one question about the finance report that we haven't gotten to yet. So I can wait till the end.
Okay. Ms. Broker.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I had a question about personnel report too. So should we worry on that?
Okay. We'll go back to personnel, so we'll just keep on this topic first. And we, I just want to real quick make sure though, if folks are asking about personnel, to confirm it's not an executive session topic. Thank you. Ms. Reed.
Would this be the time? Is, is the approval of the member, is the memorandum open for everyone to see?
I, yes, it's, it's included in your board. I hope it's included in your board.
I can see it. I meant the public because I just, I wanted them to know that we were talking with them. I don't, you know, and it's.
Yep. It's, it's, it's on the screen now, Mrs. Reed.
I'm sorry, that's not regarding a 10-year LARDA as originally requested.
No. And as, as you're aware, there was, the initial request or negotiation was for, was for 10-year LARDA. And the board was not receptive to, to that. And it's basically the, the memo of understanding dictates a three-year period where taxes the first year would be reduced 60%, then 30%, then 15%. And then on the fourth year, the taxpayer would pay the full, full tax. The LARDA essentially goes away after, after the third, after the third year.
Thank you, Mr. Fazio.
President Manuel. Thank you. I think that's a great clarifying point. Thank you, Ms. Reed and Mr. Fazio. The negotiations are for the duration and extent of the proposed LARDA. All of this, as was mentioned, still needs to be approved by the county and the Borough. So that's why this is an MOU, not an official LARDA. But I think that piece is really important that we did, that there was a lot of work done with the business office to, to reduce the terms of the proposal. Thank you.
I have a question regarding this. So if, you know, I will, I will just start by being frank. I am not a fan of giving anyone a tax break, especially under these circumstances. So I want to make that very clear and that's just my opinion on it. So I, you know, have not been a fan of this. I continue to not be a fan of this. I understand why people want this to occur. I mean, we have a dilapidated property that's just sitting there, but, but I do have concerns of, you know, this apartment complex being built is not, is a luxury apartment complex. There's no affordable housing or units assigned for affordable housing. In some, some cities, you know, you will see where you may build this luxury complex, but you have to sign, you know, 10% of those units at an affordable rate or 15% or something like that. And there's none of that happening here. From, you know, what Westroom proposed, its studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms. I forgot the exact number of how many units it is, but for the two bedrooms, I believe it was 28 for the two bedrooms and much larger amount for the studio and one bedrooms. So their target audience is definitely not families from that, from what it seems like. But even then with 28 two-bedroom units, you know, the odds of children living there, you know, there's no way to know. And when this question was brought to Westroom, they, they, the number they threw was they believed that maybe two families would be in that apartment complex. That's their estimate. I mean, granted, we, you know, it was a 10-year that requested, it's down to three years, which, you know, I do appreciate, but, but I still have concerns, especially now that we're going over our budget and, you know, we're, we're concerned about any budget increase and any burdens it will have on the taxpayer. So, yeah, I have a lot of concerns about this. I do have a question as well. That's just my opinion on it while we're in discussion. But the question I have is, you know, this, you know, if this MOU does pass, if it gets the votes and it passes and it goes off to the Borough, for them to designate the property LARDA, what would happen if they say no on that? Does that mean that this gets null and void? And if, if they do say yes on it and it comes back to us, do we still have to, I mean, are we bound to agree to a LARDA? Or, you know, what if we, you know, if people change their mind on this and decide to vote no on it, are we legally obligated to honor it? Those are my questions.
I, yeah, I'll take some of them, the ones I can remember. I believe it was 205 units. In addition to that, most of them were one in studio and one bedroom. I, so I don't recall a lot of two bedrooms in their proposal. We also, I'm just looking at, I, I asked Mr. Kegel your question and I'm just looking for his, his response. This document and communication has been some, this does not establish a LARDA designation. The first required step is for the Borough to designate the area as eligible for LARDA tax exemption thereafter. It is optional, but not mandatory that the Borough School District and County officially grant LARDA exemption on agreed terms, usually all three act, but this is not required. School Board approval of the MOU is simply a statement that Phoenixville School District support, it is not legally binding. LARDA becomes legally binding when the school district adopts a LARDA tax exemption resolution after the Borough designation of eligibility for exemption action by the Borough School District and County. So that, I, I think that may have answered.
Yeah. It does. Yeah. And, and I also want to add that they did go to the Borough first and the Borough punted them to us. So that's something that I also want people to keep in mind. The Borough, you know, had several properties that were LARDA properties that were built, Phoenix Village being one and Riverworks being the other, or the point, I guess it's called now, being the other. And the third being where Steel Point is, but that LARDA ended up expiring and/or either expired or revoked, I can't remember. But now Steel Point is being built on those 63 acres with no LARDA, where they're building homes. And from what I've heard, those homes have already sold out and they haven't even broken ground. So, I mean, that to me just tells me how, you know, we continue to be a hot town that everybody wants to live in. And, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't want to dive too deep on this. I just, I'm just, and I know some of these things I've expressed to my fellow board members, I'm just repeating them because I want, you know, the public to be aware on where I stand on it. But, I mean, you know, right now I'm just, I'm concerned, I have real concerns about this property and granting them LARDA. It gives me some comfort in knowing that this isn't legally binding at this moment, but, but still I have concerns. And then the other thing I wanted to add was that, shoot, I lost my train of thought. If I remember, I'll add it because I'm sure we have some, some people who have hands up. So I'll let them talk and then if I remember what I was going to say, I'll add it then. But I don't know what order this was. So I will start with, from the top. So Dr. Sereni.
Thank you. I'll just be brief. I, I'm not sure if discussing children in this context is any violation of the Civil Rights Act. I want to be mindful that those under the age of 18 are protected classes. So I just, when we have the discussions about who's going to be occupying the properties, that we're just mindful that human beings under the age of 18 are actually a protected class. I wouldn't want the board to be exposed to any misinterpretation because we're certainly not trying to, you know, steer away from properties that have that population. But I, you know, maybe we could check with our council on that. I just want to make sure that we're not, that, you know, treading on areas or topics that could be sensitive and put us in zones that we don't intend to be. Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't say anything that would put us in a situation. I was only repeating what Westroom was saying, said to us.
Right. And, and I even said that same thing to Mr. Westroom. And so it's, it's not you, but definitely. I just want to be mindful and proactive that when we do talk about the properties that we are not potentially, you know, going into an area that is a protected class and yeah.
Yeah.
I know what you meant. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Counselor Jerome.
Yeah. Luckily you, you hit on one of the issues that I was going to point out, which is, I think it's important for the public to understand that the Borough Council punted this to us, which, you know, they, they kind of dropped it in our lap to make the decision. And I understand the reasoning behind it. We're the largest taxer in the, you know, in the community, but it, it was kind of a punt to the district. So, you know, we've worked in, you know, the best we could to, to make it the most palatable situation. I've been speaking openly about, you know, my support for doing this project. I think all LARDA should be on a case-by-case basis. I don't think we should ever make any blanket, you know, offer to LARDA's for, for any municipality or for, for any situation. But in this particular case, as, as I've said several times, we know that there is going to be some remediation on this property. We know that, that there are costs incurred with that, costs that they have to eat upfront before they even get anyone in the building. So I applaud Mr. Fazio and the administration for really doing what the board asked them to do, which is take, you know, what Westroom brought us and go back and, and negotiate a, what we believe and what we asked for along the way. So I, I think we're at a good place now and I would hope that we, you know, I hope that when time comes to vote on this, that, that that is, is considered. Thank you.
Ms. Reed.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo some of Mr. Counselor Jerome's comments and the Borough did, did ask to go to us and we are now proposing something and, and they, they can say no and they can make amendments. So I'm not saying, there you go Borough, but it's, it's a joint, it's a joint effort and this is how we are, are working with it.
Okay. All right. Seeing no more, hands up. I will continue with the next item on our agenda. Go back to the agenda again. Okay. So number five was approval of an agreement with BBD LLP for auditing services at a cost of $25,000 per year for fiscal years ending June 2020 to June 2023. If this is a, I believe this is for yearly, yearly auditors. We had gone out for a request or proposal for auditors again. And this is, it was narrowed down to, I believe it was two, and this is the one that ended up being selected. Mr. Fazio, if you care to elaborate a little bit on why you're suggesting this firm?
Thank you, Mrs. Soto. You're, you're absolutely right. We, we sent proposals, requests for proposals to six firms. We received four proposals back after, after we paper screened the four that we received down to two. Dr. Melver and myself interviewed the top two. And we both, based on probably a 45-minute Zoom interview with the principals of, of both firms, who will be actually doing the audit, their scope of work, their experience. BBD was selected fortunately or fortuitously. They were, they were the least expensive of the four firms, albeit only by $600 over a four-year period of time. This audit, where, where this price of 25,000 is actually a savings of, from our previous auditor. Mainly I think the competition or the competitive bid nature of this worked to our advantage. BBD has a number of school districts in Chester County, and I believe, if I remember correctly in their presentation, 29 school districts in their portfolio. So they're heavily concentrated in, in school district auditing. And, and I believe they'll be working within, with another large client in, in the Borough as well.
I need myself. Thank you so much. Dr. Sereni, you had a question?
Thank you, Mrs. Soto. I am looking at their proposal and background and just wondering, do, with something as critical as, as an auditor, audit service provider or solicitor or something like that, do we have an opportunity to meet these folks before we approve their contract? Just, and also had, were any of the firms that were contacted local? I noticed this company is in Philadelphia. Personally, I'm looking at their, where was it? Their leadership and I'm not seeing much diversity. And to me, I just, you know, I'd like to make sure that we're, you know, doing business with companies, especially if it's an opportunity for a local firm. Did, you know, did we have local representation? Did we contact local folks? They chose not to apply, fine. Can we meet people? You know, I'd like to know more, why are we going into the city? There's, is there anybody else even in Chester County perhaps? If it's expertise, that's understandable. I just would like some insight to share. I feel that this is a type of service provider that we're going to work very closely with. So I feel it would be critical to potentially meet candidates before approving them. It's great to have the bio and whatnot, but maybe there's some other additional information to be able to, to view that could, you know, answer questions, especially with, given our sensitive, you know, recovery from where, where we, where we're coming from. We want to feel good about it and also give our community members an opportunity as well. So thank you.
Ms. Broker. Ms. Broker, you have your hand up?
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. White, uh, uh, did you have a question, Ms. Broker?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
As far as the auditor goes, um, I just want to make sure that they're gonna be doing audits of all of our bank accounts. Um, uh, because I noted that we haven't, um, there's not been any audit of the student activities account, um, that I can find on record. Um, and, um, I know that there's several other, uh, accounts that, um, I think they're at the Phoenix Federal Federal Bank and Trust, um, that should by law have been audited. And, um, are they gonna be going back and doing that? Um, for this year and, um, I want to just make sure that that's covered within the scope of their.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Broker. Um, um, uh, Dr. Melber and I were, uh, both very candid, uh, with the, uh, auditors in the interview, um, with respect to the, um, experience that we had with the previous auditor. Um, you know, Dr. Melber, that Dr. Melber has the wealth of experience as well in the school district business. Um, I, I believe, um, you know, he will, um, draw their attention to the areas, um, of need. Um, you know, specifically things like segregation of duties, uh, the auditing of the athletic accounts of, uh, you know, things like, things for summer, uh, student activities that, as you said, um, the areas, uh, where we've, uh, probably have the most need. Uh, you, we discussed, um, upfront where we want their concentration. So, I'm, I left the interviews pretty comfortable, um, that both firms had a, had a good grasp of what we were looking for. Um, and probably especially this year, um, one of the principals of, of BBD, uh, will be doing the audit himself. Um, and, uh, because, uh, uh, he wants to, he wants to ensure himself that, um, that the audit goes well and, um, and all the, uh, all the bases are covered.
So that, I'm just, just to be clear, so they, they're gonna be doing the audit, their audit will include all of the bank accounts?
Oh, definitely. Without, without question. I mean, without, without question.
And, okay. And I guess, I guess we can maybe speak at another time about the fact that the other bank accounts, um, have not been audited. Um, that, uh, the ones that are at the Phoenix Federal Bank and Trust, um, that that was a surprise when I learned that. And so, um, perhaps that can be done retroactively. I don't know, but, uh, we can talk about that at some point.
Um, Mr. Weiss?
Yes, um, I must have printed out an older version of the agenda and, and this item wasn't on there. Can you let me know this, uh, recommendation was, was added to the agenda?
Well, yeah. Well, when we had the finance meeting, um, at the time, Mr. Fazio, there, there was a line item for it. It just wasn't filled in. And Mr. Fazio had, um, interviews with, I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Fazio, with two different firms and was gonna make a recommendation, which was when it was, so it was added on to this agenda, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but I was at the, the, the finance committee meeting and I didn't get the sense that it was eminently gonna be, to be coming to this, um, meeting for discussion. And, uh, I guess I'm just asking, when was it added?
Yeah, it was discussed. It was. I, because I remember recall the discussion and saying that it was gonna be put, a recommendation was gonna be given for workshop. So, I mean, we still have a week until we vote on this. So, if you have questions about, um, them, you have time to review it.
Uh, uh, and I, and I appreciate all of that. I thank you for that. But my question is just very simple. What date was this added to the agenda?
Sure. I, I, I can answer that.
I don't know what date it was. It.
Well, I, I, Doug, Doug, I can, the interviews, the interviews with, um, both firms, um, the, the board finance committee meeting was Monday, coordinating, uh, Jeremy's, uh, Dr. Melber's, my, and the auditors' schedules. We interviewed one, I believe, on Tuesday, the other on Wednesday. Um, and I made the, um, I, I, I just, just Friday or, or I just, uh, put, I just finished this up this week.
Okay. Thanks. I just have one other question. Um, it sounds like you had a very meaningful discussion uh, with, um, the folks at BBD. Is there any plan to memorialize some of the highlights of that discussion? Not word for word, but some of the key points, um, that may or not have been spelled out in, in the RFP, but were discussed as things that should be, you know, included or sensitive areas to make sure we, we examine?
Sure. I, I, I'd be happy to co- consolidate my notes. Um, and I could reach out to Dr. Melber, uh, to see, uh, you know, to, I'm confident that he took notes. I, I, I can attest to that because it was a, a virtual meeting. Um, but I'll reach out to him tomorrow and, and see if, um, you know, I'll, I'll put something in the board update of, um, you know, with respect to my notes of the interview.
That's excellent. Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, for coming in late, everybody. I literally just walked in the door from vacation fifteen minutes ago, so I apologize for my tardiness.
Welcome back, Mr. Goldberg. Um, Ms. Reed.
I just wanted to clarify, um, Mr. Fazio said that the RFP was sent to six firms. I think that the RFP was sent out, a general RFP, and then six firms who worked with other school districts in, in Chester County were contacted specifically, but the RFP was open to whoever wanted to apply.
You're right. You're, you're absolutely right, Mrs. Reed. I, uh, thanks for the clarification. It was, it was, uh, publicly bid, publicly advertised, but specifically, um, I, I, uh, requested, uh, or, or sent out the, uh, invitation to specifically six firms that uh, either did work in Chester County or the surrounding counties, or firms that I was, uh, that I knew concentrated on school districts.
Thank you, Mr. Fazio.
President Emanuel.
Uh, real quick clarification, jumping back one subject, so I hope that's okay. On the MOU, the Lerdas MOU, we are going to post that, attach it to the agenda for the voting meeting and we will make it accessible to the public. So, members of the public can read that document. I know that it was briefly up on screen, but so the folks can see the details in there, I just wanted to share that piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Serini.
Thank you. Mr. Fazio, can you just let us know? I'm sure there's somebody out there wondering somewhere which, um, where we advertise the RFP for the auditors and, uh, specifically what trade publications we may have used in, in the area, um, potentially, uh, you know, where we put the, the messaging out, just so we make sure we scaled it to reach as many, um, potential candidates as possible.
I believe it was just, uh, advertised on our website, Dr. Serini.
And the, the BBD that submitted their bid, did they, were they one of the six that were contacted or, um, okay, so they were one of the six that were contacted. And then, so how many total did we receive? How many inquiries?
Um, we received, uh, four proposals.
And of the six that we directly contacted, how many of the four were from our outreach efforts?
All of them.
Okay. So, we had no candidates who responded to the RFP on our website and we didn't publish it in any trade publications that were, A, ECPA or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, normally, um, the RFPs, yeah, they get announced on our website. That's usually the, the protocol. Um, and that they're on there, so that's usually, um, how it works. So, that's, um, makes sense to me. All right.
I, I, I guess I would just, if we wanted to make sure we had the broadest, um, pool, would it have made sense to go to a trade, um, association or something? Just curious. And I was wondering, I'm sure other people may be wondering too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I realized I, um, I had, uh, two people had questions about personnel and I meant to circle back and I didn't. So, um, do you, do you guys still have those questions? Um, and if it's personal information, just gotta, want to add that we have to go into an executive session.
Mrs. Broker, you, you had one and I had one. Do you want to go first or?
Uh, it doesn't matter to me.
You go.
Can, can people hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, I just, I, I noted that there, I guess there's a recent, another, um, yes, another retirement of, and, um, just, I'm a little concerned about, um, just back, the backfilling, um, because, uh, what do we have now? Is it two social studies? No, I can't even find it. Two social studies, teaching, oh, here it is. Um, yeah, social studies, social studies. Um, I'm just wondering that, I just wanted to make sure that these are gonna be filled as social studies is, um, you know, one of those important things that, where you can learn about history and diversity and all kinds of topics that are, um, I think very germane right now. So, um.
Positions were advertised today, Mrs. Broker?
Okay, wonderful. Um, okay. And then, um, as far as the, uh, um, Mr. Janta, um, he, was that, that date was changed? Is it, it looks like he, I thought that.
This is, um, individual. We need to go to exec session.
No, I'm just, I'm asking if the date was changed?
The date was changed per his request.
Okay. Um, okay. And are we able to, um, do, can we move on to another part of the report or shell, um?
Well, let's focus on personnel real quick and then we continue. Um, Dr. Serini.
Thank you. I just had more of a, a statement. Um, the items one, A through E, do we collect exit interviews so that we can, um, and where can we pretend, look at them? And I'd be curious just to have some, uh, insight as to various things that could help us in the future as we, um, consider our strategic planning, um, that we have slated for the summer. And then just with regard to one C, was that prolonged or was it shortened or lengthened that that particular decision related to one C?
That was shortened by a few days.
Okay.
Mrs. Rockwood, on the other question, does conduct exit, exit interviews? And then does a summary for the board every, you know, every so many months. Um, she sent one out, I want to say about four weeks ago on some.
Yes. And I have, um, I have reached out and, and communicated with all of these most recent resignations and retirements. Um, and I will be conducting exit interviews with them as well. Could we maybe just see like a blank version of your, your questions, just to make sure you're capturing the type of data that we might be interested in for future, either strategic planning in terms of our resources or in general?
I'm, I'm gonna jump in and, and, and I know I haven't, didn't raise my hand, but I, I really think that's micromanaging. That is not our province. I, I, that, that's why we have an HR department, with all due respect, Dr. Trini. I, I'm not saying I'm disinterested, but that's really getting into the weeds.
So, we've been doing great, Mr. Goldberg. I don't think anybody's interrupted up until now. And so, I, I think my question is reasonable, especially since we're getting into strategic planning. And with strategic planning, um, we look at internal and external factors that influence our long-term decisions. So, um, I don't think it's micromanaging if we want to make sure that, if there's a particular data point we're looking for. So, um, thank you for your opinion, but, you know, I wouldn't have asked if I didn't have a, a, a logical reason. We don't have an institutional research or department. So, this is a key area to, um, get information that could potentially help our remaining staff and with retaining them and enticing them to stay. So.
Yeah, I mean, I respect your curiosity. I, I don't, and I don't, I don't, I'm fine that you asked for it, but I, I've been a whole strong to that. That is way, that is, um, that's really into the weeds. I mean, but that's far into the weeds. Actually, I'm, I'm afraid we're gonna have to agree to disagree on this.
Um, I agree, Mr. Goldberg. Um, sorry, uh, Mr. Weiss, you had a, a question?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to know if there's, um, uh, is there, if there's an executive session coming up where we can talk about some of the things in the personnel report that are more appropriate in there? Um, uh, I, I did have one question. I got an answer. Um, it, it didn't totally satisfy my, myself and it's not appropriate to discuss it in this forum. So, I was just wondering, is there an executive session coming up? Um, maybe before next meet, next week's meeting or something like that, that we could have an opportunity to delve into that?
We have an executive session after this meeting tonight on another topic. You can obviously bring up personnel during that.
Okay. I, I guess I didn't see that on my calendar. Thanks, uh, Dr. Figgly.
Yeah, it's there. Um, Mr., President Emanuel, you had your hand up. You took it down?
I did. I'll pass it on.
Uh, Mr. Goldberg?
Uh, let's see. Thank you. Um.
On personnel, just real quick.
Yeah, well, though I disagree with Dr. Serini, I, I do think she deserves to have this, uh, the last issue that she brought, uh, brought up discussed. I mean, she didn't really get closure on her request. Whether I agree with it or not, it's still, it's only.
Um, President Emanuel, did you have a response to that?
I did. What I was gonna suggest, um, individuals can request anything. However, it is, uh, prudent that we seek the will of the board before we ask administration to do something. So, if any individual has any requests, my ask is that they then, um, seek the majority. And if the majority of the board does not wish to delve into that and to receive that information, then administration would not share it. If the majority does, then they would therefore share it with the full board.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Broker.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, no, I was just going to, um, say that I think it's, uh, I think, um, you know, from what I've read of, uh, our responsibilities, um, particularly if it involves, um, like a department head or, or, um, you know, a higher ranking official, um, that it's actually, when, um, that's something that is, uh, something that the board, um, you know, it, it has responsibility to look into. Um, and I don't think it's, you know, I, I just, this, we, we throw around the word micromanaging a lot. Um, and maybe we should get a definition on that because I would, and what, what I'm reading is, is not consistent with what I'm hearing. And, um, and so maybe it's something, uh, we could come up with in policy or, I, I don't know. But we, we definitely need a definition of that term, I think.
Ms. Reed.
I'm going to agree with everybody right now and say, um, it is, it is, um, getting into the weeds, as Mr. Goldberg likes to say, but also we do need to tie some of that to our strategic plan. So, what I could propose and not put up for a motion is that perhaps when we work on the strategic plan and the upcoming goals for the year, because we'll be doing that soon, is we request specific information to be put into the exit interviews and then we can get that information. Because we don't, I, I'm not gonna look at someone's personnel file regarding their exit view, exit interviews and we can, and, um, Mrs. Rockwood is going to get the information she and administration wants. And if the board wants specific information tied to specific strategic goals, then that is the information we could ask for. And we will be doing all of that very soon, I believe. Is that correct, President Emanuel?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. I have two more hands up and I'm gonna just make these the last two and then move on because we still have a very long agenda and we're just going in circles. So, um, Dr. Serini.
Just wanted to clarify that I had intent, I asked for a blank. I would never want to see someone's personnel file.
Oh, of course, of course.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to clarify. That was my ask. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Sorry, little button malfunction. Um, I, I just wanted to, to say that I respectfully disagree with, uh, uh, with, with Dave. And his, his last name just blew my mind. I can't, I'm sorry, sir. Uh, that I. Goldberg, thank you. Uh, that, that I think there is very valuable, uh, information to be learned from exit interviews. And um, as Ms. Reed, uh, suggested, we can say what we want, but it may or may not already be there. And without seeing a blank, we may be asking for redundancy. So, I, I guess if it's. So I, I guess if it's a form that has to get emailed, I, I don't see a huge task to administration. That's just my two cents and see if the will of the board goes there or not, to ask for a blank form.
Okay, Ms. Broker, um, what was the last thing? Is it something different? Cause I do wanna move forward.
Yeah, what, no, I just wanted to, actually, I was just, um, it was item B. Are we on to that or no?
Um, I'm trying to move forward, so I've already went.
I don't wanna jump the gun on that, but, okay.
We're, we're up to number six on, um, in C. So you had a question about item B?
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, one B, um, or actually B, yeah, um, I just wanna make sure we're not, I mean, we're not voting on these because I have uh, multiple times asked to, multiple times asked to see the payment orders um, on these dispersments and have not gotten them. Um, and I know it's been hard because people have been out of the office, um, you know, but.
I did, I've not received any emails from you regarding a payment order, unless.
I've asked multiple times, actually, I can show you the emails to the president, so, um, it's.
Yeah, but if you have questions regarding finance, you should email me and CC Mr. Fazio on it.
Asked you many times, okay, I don't wanna get into it, but.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Up, up, okay, yeah, cause the secretary is supposed to sign off on those, actually is required to. Um, and then the other question that I, and I, I guess I can, maybe I can meet with Mr. Fazio and, and look, and look at these myself um, tomorrow. And uh, the next thing is, as far as the checks, um, I and again, if you're not voting on this today, that's fine, I can, I can wait. Um, but if we are, then.
My request, voting on it today is the budget. I will say, I will, I will repeat myself, my request, if anyone has any questions on stuff in finance where they need detailed information, I just asked that you email me. CC, um, you can CC President Emmanuel and Mr. Fazio, those questions ahead of time so that we can have, have, so that they have time. Mr. Fazio has time to get back to you.
And, okay, I have asked, I've actually tried to get in last week, um, that, you know, people are not in. It's really something that the secretary and the treasurer are supposed to meet at, over, and I'm going straight off of what the code says. I've said this multiple times. And um, I can show you all the emails about it, but this has gotta, we've gotta go, do this by the book. This is.
Okay, we can discuss, let's discuss off my Ms. Broker then, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to do that. Yes, let's please do that, cause we need a procedure here.
Okay, I'm, alright, I'm gonna keep going, cause we'll have to go over the budget.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, C six, which is approval to appoint PNC Bank, Citizen Bank, BBT Bank, and Ph- Phoenixville Federal as our banking depositories for um, the next fiscal year. Um, that's just standard um, that we have. Um, Dr. Serini, did you have a question on that?
Just wondering why we need half a dozen bank accounts? Can we, you know, have one, is it, do we have any opinion on, from our auditors as to why that's necessary, et cetera? I just, it seems complicated.
Uh, I, I could speak to that. Uh, we're actually consolidating, uh, Dr. Serini. Uh, PNC Bank is where we have our uh, checking account, uh, our investments are, you know, the bulk of our, uh, bulk of our transactions are through PNC, it's slash PISLA. Uh, Phoenixville Federal's local bank, uh, scholarship funds, um, and I believe, um, I believe, uh, that's where Phoenixville Summers account is, that will probably be collapsing on July first, moving that into the general fund. Uh, BBT Bank, I, I believe that's one account, um, and I think that was an investment counter, that was a, an account that was set up uh, for, um, to, to designate, that we designated some funds, um, and um, we left the uh, the, the left of funds in, in that bank and Citizens Bank, I, off the top of my head, I, I can't remember. Um, but again, I've been working, I will be working with, uh, Dr. Melbar. Uh, and that's the whole, that's the whole goal is, is to consolidate probably um, all these accounts into just one bank account and we may keep a local bank, uh, Phoenixville Federal, but I would, I would think, uh, it will just be PNC Bank and Phoenixville Federal going forward, probably soon after July first.
But I don't see anything on the agenda um, with regard to the signers for the accounts. I know last week you had said you were gonna request, um, Dr. Fegley, and I couldn't remember who the other person was because you're pending departure and prior to the new business manager beginning on July first, so. Um, what, where are we? Do we still need signers or what's the status of that?
Uh, I, I, you, to be honest, I, I haven't done anything, uh, since, uh, since the committee meeting. Um, but uh, I, I would, I would, I, I think where I was going with that is um, you know, there was a reason that we were trying, uh, oh, it was to transfer the PAC funds. Um, you, and I didn't want to uh, do that prior to June thirtieth because it seemed, uh, it, it seemed rather odd for me just to be on account for, you know, fourteen or so days, so I wanted to wait until, uh, Dr. Melbar, um, came. Um, and, and that's the, uh, that would be my advice, is that, uh, my signature would transition to his. Um, and the other signers would be, uh, you know, would be, uh, consistent with what they are now.
And thank you, Mr. Fazio.
Um, with, one more question, really quick, that, I know you said there were two outstanding checks, um, for uh, the one, the P, the, I guess the Phoenixville account, do you know what they were and have they been reconciled and you know, is there any delay with pushing that into July in terms of the, you know, the transition and?
No, I could, um, I, when I met with, uh, the officers of, of the, uh, of PAC, um, I do recall that they were waiting on one deposit. Um, and there were two outstanding checks that were not cashed, uh, but this was, you know, probably two weeks ago. I have not followed up with them. Um, to see if those, uh, checks have cleared. Um, I would, I would think they would have by now. Um, I could reach out, um, I could.
Are we talking like five figures, a couple of dollars, like what, what is?
One, one actually was forty dollars, I think it was. Uh, one was forty dollars for actually a, a software license for, uh, Microsoft Outlook or something like that, and the other was a couple hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Broker.
Um, yeah, I just, um, uh, I just forgot my question. No, I, yeah, as to that, um, as to the bank accounts. Um, I mean, my understanding was the recommendation was that we would consolidate all of them into one bank account. That was out of, um, you know, the, the the thing that we had done. Um, and I, I don't, I, I don't see why we're, why we're not doing that and um, that's number one. The second thing is, um, uh, Mr. Fazio, are you, are you still the tre, are you the treasurer? I, I need some clarification because, um, and we're supposed to be looking at all the, the bank account statements from all the depositories, and I haven't seen any. Um, that's just.
The bank account statements are on the finance report every month.
Not for all of them, though.
They, they were this past time, Mrs. Broker, all the ones that we had received. Now, there's some we had yet to receive for the months, but all the ones we have received were posted with the finance agenda.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
I, I, okay, well, well, okay, and it's, it's something that we need to do, there's gotta be a reconciliation for the end, end of the year, so. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that we can get, you know, the, the, all, all of the bank account statements from the PAC.
Um, we will be getting those, and that's why we need to also approve the, work on approving the auditor so that we have, you know, the complete reconciliation can take place for the nineteen twenty school year.
I understand, but I'm talking about reconciliation for, for, for this year. Um, so, you know, that's.
About the same thing, but.
Fiscal year, so I just wanna make sure that I know what, who to, all right, um, I, I do wanna keep forward. Dr. Serini, is this a new question? Cause I wanna, I wanna move forward on the agenda. But this is, this is something that really has to happen before the end of the year.
Right, well, I mean, I, I, Mrs. Broker, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I, you know, technically, I mean, to answer your point about the, the treasurer removal, I still haven't exercised my right to challenge.
Point of order.
To do.
Sorry, Ms. Reed, excuse me, guys.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Point of order. And what is the point of order, Ms. Reed?
We need to follow the agenda. This, this isn't regarding the agenda.
It, it is, because.
Point taken. The president has noted that the point is taken into consideration and it is accurate. At this time, we are going to stick to the agenda. I'm going to appeal that. It is, it is on the agenda and it's actually something of quite of, of an urgency, so.
Treasurer is not on the agenda. Therefore, we are moving forward. Ms. Soto, what do you have in addition regarding the finance report? Um, next item is number seven, is.
I'd like to call a recess, excuse me, I'd like to call a recess so we can check with.
You need to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to call a recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. I, I, I would like to stick to the agenda. We still have to go over the budget. We still have a, a technology presentation, so I, I will ask that we just continue on the agenda.
If we're, listen, okay, if we're not gonna vote on any of this stuff, that's fine, then I'll have time, I can, I'll figure this out. Thanks.
Motion withdrawn.
Thank you. Number seven is approval of a memorandum of understanding. Um, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna lump seven and eight together, cause it's basically the same thing. Except, um, they're both approval of memorandum of understanding. One is with the Phoenixville Police, um, Borough Department, sorry, Phoenixville Borough Police Department, and the other, other one is with the Schuylkill Township Police Department, and, um, and this is just standard, um, that we have, uh, we do this every two years with them. Uh, Ms., uh, President Emmanuel, did you have a question?
Apologies, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Number eight is approval of nine reciprocal memorandums of understanding for use and occupancy of facilities for emergency purposes um, for a period of July first, twenty twenty two, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Um, I believe if anyone has questions on that, I, that would have to be executive session, if I recall. Um, that's just for safety standards. Um. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just making sure. Um, number ten is approval of professional service agreement with the CCIU for medical authorization, authorization approvals required for school-based access billing of MA eligible, um, health-related services for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. And this is for, um, for, I think this is for people who have access, um, we, giving us the, the right to be able to bill them for medical expenses for access. Um, I believe that's what that is for. I can't find, my notes are a little out of order here, so. Um, number eleven, just making sure no one has questions. Number eleven is approval of a renewal of the medical program administration, administrative services contract with Independence Blue Cross IBX for the term of July first, twenty twenty, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, that one is, sorry. Just look at my notes. That is for, um, I don't have it on my notes. Mr. Fazio, can you just elaborate real quick on that one?
Sure, um, IBX is Independence Blue Cross, um, they provide, uh, healthcare services to our employees. This is, uh, this is the contract that we have with IBC, uh, to administer, uh, um, our medical.
Yeah, I just found it right now, so the medical services, okay. Um, that's, uh, number eleven. Number twelve is an approval to purchase technology for all for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Um, Mr. Gibson, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Soto. Our, yeah, um, uh, what we're looking to do, uh, in light of the, uh, the recent months and the events that we have, have had to deal with as a school district. Uh, Phoenixville School District has always been a, a district where we, we purchased technology, we've used it in the classrooms and, and folks have uh, and, and the folks go home and, and then they come back and use it tomorrow. Uh, recent, recent years, we've, uh, started online systems such as Canvas for curriculum and, uh, and teachers have begun building courses out there. In light of where we're at today uh, and, and going forward, the, the need has come and, and administration has, uh, looked at what does, what does education and what is this all gonna look like going forward, uh, from this pandemic and beyond, to be quite honest with you, so. Uh, we're calling it a virtual, uh, uh, technology for all program. We're hesitant to call it things. Many have likened it to a one-to-one program. We're, we're not looking in that direction. Uh, a one-to-one program traditionally is something that I get a, I get a Chromebook or a tablet, I go home, I do a little work, I come back into a brick and mortar setting and then we have discussions uh, tomorrow. What we're looking to emulate more here, uh, in light of kids being out long-term in, in light of, uh, the options that are available for students and families out there today is to take advantage of the systems and, and the, the wonderful curriculum that the teachers have, uh, in the district now and provide it almost a full virtual program. And when I say that, it's not, it's not sending all of our kids just permanently out to virtual school, but the idea of being ready for whatever happens, being ready if there, if we have one-third of our kids in due to social distancing and two-thirds of our, our students are home. Uh, the, in light of the fact that maybe we're shut down for a month or more, uh, and, and beyond that, things like snow days and so forth, just having that ability and the flexibility to always have virtual school, not on its own, but to stay in step with that brick and mortar environment. Taking all of that in mind, one of the things that we've had to do is figure out how do we ensure that we have a, a piece of technology that can, uh, that can match what the student needs for that curriculum, not only if they're just home, but if they're going back and forth uh, on, on a regular basis. So what we provided, uh, is three different options, uh, which is the one attachment that you, you have before you. Um, and basically, I'm gonna focus on option two, which is district, district supply device, because that's really what it comes down to with this purchase, uh, for number twelve. Um, and what we're looking to do currently in our inventory in the district, we have about twenty-two hundred machines, uh, laptops of, of varying ages and so forth. But they're all still very usable. They've worked great for us, uh, during the last several months. Uh, what we, what we are looking to do is add to that to, to, to come up to the level of enrollment we have in K through twelve, to make sure that every student in the district has the ability to have a laptop. Uh, we're, the reason, one of the reasons I wanna clarify that we're looking to everybody is we had a situation over the last several months that was just out of the blue. Everybody had to deal with it on the fly, not only the district, but also the families out there. So I might have had a laptop at home, needed another one, but the laptop that was being used by my, my students as a supplement might have been mine, might have been one that, you know, for this time period, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be able to do that, but we need to plan for the long term. So along with this, and, and the, the purchase is the idea that looking forward this direction uh, actually helps us as a district, gets not only ensure that every student in the district has access to the technology they need, but that also the district gets some sort of return on that investment as well. Uh, so the, what we're proposing tonight, uh, with this purchase is a, a purchase of two thousand laptops. Uh, that will roll out basically from grade seven to eight new laptops and, and ensure, there are two different types of laptops, two models. The one is a bigger laptop, more powerful, can handle those secondary courses and the software that they use. Uh, so, and then the smaller one would be for the, and not only is it lesser and power, but also has smaller keyboards for the smaller hands and, and the better ability for their dexterity. So that amounts to two thousand laptops, and that the total purchase of that, their Dell laptops, we're also purchasing insurance with those uh, to ensure that for accidental damage and so forth as we go forward. Uh, the purchase of those laptops in, in total is, was gonna come to one point, one million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety-nine. Now, that is if we purchase them outright. What we looked at as well is an option of leasing them. Uh, so option number two would be a four-year lease with a dollar buyout at the end. If we broke that four-year lease down, that brings us down to a, a forty-eight month lease, uh, or forty, yeah, forty-eight month lease and an annual payment of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and five dollars. That's about what we pay now for technology, uh, for students. That's, that's in the realm of. That's about what we pay now for technology uh, for students. That's that's in the realm of what we we put out in the districts. Or across the district. One of the things that will go along with this is as we hand these laptops out, like many school districts do. We ask that the families give, pay, help pay for that insurance and so forth. So what we're looking at for these laptops is. Uh, we would provide these laptops to the students and the families would pay a a fifty-dollar fee per year. Uh, for up to five years for the life of the laptop. If it's a if it's a senior, obviously, they would pay one year and then we would take the laptop back at the end of that and recycle it back to, say, seventh grade and and continue that cycle through. Um, but it would be a a fifty-dollar a year payment. It would be the first accidental. Issue, something spills on it, it's dropped, it's broken, what have you. Uh, that would be free, one per year. Uh, beyond that, on the second one, it would go to a uh, a fifty-dollar uh, deductible. And then we would the we would fix fix it. Uh, and the the third would be a seventy-five. And and beyond that, we would deal with that uh, with a we would charge the family for that if if it was, you know, multiple times. So we would also have a cap as a hundred and fifty dollars per family. So a family that would have more than three students. We wouldn't be charging them two, two hundred and fifty dollars a year. So it would be a hundred and fifty-dollar cap per household on that. So breaking that down, looking at overall investment, if I look at those fees coming back in. I'm I'm bringing in over that course of that five years for this investment. Five hundred thousand dollars for that to help the district refresh those going forward. And and continue this cycle to provide this technology out there going forward. Again, right now, we're dealing with a pandemic. It might be two months, it might be six months, it might be a year, some are saying potentially more. But beyond that, I think one of the things that Dr. Whitehead and Dr. Fegley and 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 all of curriculum and the teachers are realizing that. You know, we're changing the face of education here by what we've done over the last few months. And and I think as a district, one of the things we're trying to strategize and prepare for is to be ready for that as we go forward, to be flexible enough. To handle whatever happens and to move forward with that. Um, and for the first time, unlike we would buy technology traditionally, where we would go. Put an outlay of money, use them in the school, they would last for five years and then we would recycle them and receive nothing back other than that usage. Now, because of that virtual like that virtualization and and the ability to take them home, now we get some sort of return back on that investment. So what we're coming to the board tonight to to look at um, is is to allow this purchase to go forward. Uh, I know this isn't the voting meeting, but but we're requesting if we can move forward sooner rather than later. And the reason I say that is could. Because in these times, just as we find with PPE and other supplies out there, every day I delay at this front end, I'm losing two to three days of delivery time. At the at this point now, I'm looking at a delivery time at the end of July. That gives the technology team one month to have every one of these machines, software built, software ready, locked down, ready to go, safe. Assigned to a student and hand it out. Um, and and that's gonna be a tight schedule. So. We're this is this is kind of something that we're here and ready to do and we'll I'll bring I'll leave it to you for questions at that point. Or Dr. Fegley, if you have something to add.
I'm sure that I know there's questions that are out there and board will open it up to you for questions.
Okay, um, I will start with Ms. Reed. She there?
Ms. Reed's muted.
There, sorry, I had a problem. Um.
Okay.
So thank you very much for your patience. I hear we have twenty-two hundred laptops that we're going to disperse. I hear we're going to get another two thousand more. Um, that covers all of our children. Do we do we need that many?
I believe we do. Uh, and the reason for that, and I initially struggled with that myself, but the reality is, even if I'm doing. Uh, you know, we're social distancing on day one and I have a third of the students in and two thirds of the students out. And then tomorrow I have, you know, and that's Monday. On Tuesday, I have the other third of the students in and and two thirds of the students out. Because I can only put so many students in a classroom, uh, because I've got desks six foot apart and we only have so much space. How how do we deal with that?
Um, I'm sorry.
So so with that constant changing of the guard, if you will, with students coming in and out. Uh, there's always gonna be that hybrid and that's really what some of the scenarios we've looked at have broken down to. This is starting out gonna be a a serious hybrid uh, solution for for the district.
I I guess my question is, I'm sorry, Mr. Gibson, um. Are we doing um, bring your own device? Like, maybe we can get rid of not buy five hundred of these.
Well, and that's a great question. Thank you. And that was actually on the one attachment. You see, that was option number one. And that 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 seems to draw the most questions and and yes, we are looking at a bring your own device. We're we're working with that going forward. That's not really gonna help us on day one for the most part. We probably and what we're going to look for is to basically market that and we are looking at opportunities, as you can see in option one. We're looking at potentially putting out some kind of criteria to say to parents out there, you know, and and the reason we're doing that is this. I think this is important. Um, the laptops we're going to give a student or put into that family, they have our software on it, they're locked down, they're filtered. They're for education purposes, period. That student's not gonna be able to install games, they're not gonna be able to go Amazon shopping, they're not gonna go to enough, yeah, there's no. There's none, yeah. So so we're gonna have that technology in that house and and but that's strictly what it's gonna be for is school. So you're gonna get a handful of folks out there that potentially say, you know what, but I'd like them to just have one machine. That they're comfortable with, that has their stuff on it, customized for them. You you you're going to get a small percentage that wanna do that. So one of the things we're trying to do is say. Here is a set of criteria. Here's how much memory you need in it. Here's you need to have this, you need to have antivirus on it for this extended period of time that you'll be using it. Here's the different things you'll need on that. And in return for that, maybe what we look at as a district is say, we'll give you a, as long as you maintain that laptop. We're not gonna support it, you will. But but we'll offer you perhaps a, you know, some sort of rebate program, say fifty dollars a year for each year you decide to do that. And and it might sound odd, well, why are we giving them money?
Right.
Well, because to your point, that's one less laptop ultimately that the district ends up having to buy. And we don't wanna just give them X amount totally because they may say, well, in year two, they may say, well, I want a district laptop now. And we just gave them this sum of money. Does that make sense? So so the B Y O T, we're gonna market and we're gonna we're gonna look at that. But we're only gonna get such a percentage and and honestly, there's no way to gauge that on day one. And still with fifty percent of the laptops that we would have to buy yet in years coming. We'll have time to make with that flexibility, that will allow us to accommodate for that.
Thank you. And I like what you said that, you know, it'd be locked down because I really wouldn't. Uh, in school, they should all have have the same, just so not everyone's looking on Facebook. So um, thank you very much. And I know that at the end of the lease, we also have the option to buy it. So maybe. If someone's able and they really like the school laptop, they can make a donation to PC EF and um, for technology.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Weiss.
You're muted.
My apologies, sorry. Uh, a couple of questions for for Mr. Gibson. Uh, I noticed that you. Um, pretty much you you've selected a manufacturer of la- of laptops, you've selected Dell. Did you go out on bids for um, other possible vendors, for lack of a better term?
We.
Two thousand.
That's a great question. And and I'm sorry, were you not done?
No, I'm just gonna say two thousand laptops is a is a pretty handy purchase.
It is. Um, and and what we did is we did look at vendors. We did not go out on on a public RFP, if you will, because usually what happens there, especially with technology, is you get what you pay for. Uh, but we did select vendors like Dell. We did look at Lenovo as well. We we got samples of the Lenovo laptops and different models in as well. And those vendors are already pre-selected by the state of Pennsylvania and beyond as Pepp- both Peppa and CoStar are selected vendors, which means they've already been vetted. By by the state as going through a bidding process. So they're already part of that. So to that question. Basically, yes, we we did go through that process. We simply didn't offer a public RFP. Our backend systems and one of the things that really helped along the way these last several months. Because we are are have always been a district using Dell, uh, long before I came here. We really, you know, when a student or a teacher has a problem, my staff and team can remote into their machines if they're virtual and fix them on the fly. And that's enormous when you have four thousand students and and some four hundred teachers that are out and they need, you know, it's it's not a bank. But it's instruction and those kids are here for a hundred and eighty days for twelve years. And my personal feeling is if I lose twenty minutes of your time, it may be the twenty minutes that made the difference in your world. So we do whatever we can to ensure that that instruction keeps going unfettered. So that's one of the reasons we selected the Dells, yes.
Okay, um, the other question is is. During this spring closure that that we've had, we we had seven hundred computers to to loan out and and we did. And we managed to have successful educational experiences for for our students. Uh, well, that's what I keep hearing anyway. Uh, that that we have them. So uh, it gives me pause to say that we. You know, we we know that people are using their own computers now. Um, that seems to be. It seems to be a little, uh. I don't know, uh, I'm not not unlikely, but less favored of an approach. And I guess I'm just kind of looking at 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 the dollars for this. Um, so, you know, do do we have a do we have a, you know, could be possibly get an estimate of how many home computers we're talking about? I mean, you threw a number out of ten percent. But I uh, I'm guessing that there's more than ten percent of people using their home computers now for their for their students' education. And.
And that's a great point, a great question that you brought up. And 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 I would. We we kind of raised over a little bit earlier. Um, and yes, you might have. And we did have several students out there that have their own technology. And a couple of points to that, A, it may not have been their technology. It may have been mom and dad's laptop, you know. And my kids use my laptops for years and it has my financial software and there's no way they were taking that to school. But they could use it here. So that was that was one situation. Uh, you also have the situation where it may be their laptop, but quite honestly, they may not wanna bring it to school. They, you know, it's theirs, it's home, it's not for education, it's their gaming laptop or what have you, and they don't want a chance bringing it into school, getting it. You know, dropping it, breaking it, losing it, you know, whatever may happen in that transit. Um, you know, I have three laptops here and they're all plugged in and they rarely leave my desk here. And many people are like that. So we have we have to account for the fact that, uh, you know. We need to be ready for that student that's gonna be here on Monday, but they're gonna be out Tuesday and Wednesday, but they're gonna be back on Thursday and then. Out Friday and Monday and back the following Tuesday. However that schedule looks, we have to be ready for those students to be able to transfer with with technology. And again, this initial pro- purchase looks really big, but remember. We still have fifty percent on the backend that is inventory machines that offers us the flexibility past next year. To begin to look at what are the real numbers coming in at and do we need to keep going with this? How does it look? So this is to get us up and running with this, but good point.
No, I and and I guess I still think we need to go find out what that estimate is of how many people are willing to bring their laptop in. You're making the assumption that they won't want to. And I don't think that's a fair assumption without asking the question. Um, and and then I also have a concern. Right now for this year, it's it's a little crazy with the with the pandemic. We don't know what the school year is really gonna look like. Um, if you listen to the news, we may have a vaccine in twelve months, eighteen months. So, you know, will the curriculums really be that nailed down that if you don't have a school laptop. You are really at a disadvantage. Because I'm thinking, you know, all of the all of the numbers you crunched were based on five-year uh, fees and five-year spread of of uh. The rentals and stuff. And if, you know, we're not there and we're only gonna do this for a year and a half or a year. That blows the numbers out of the water. So I'm just a little concerned about that. And 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 I guess my last point is is. For families that are on free and reduced lunches. Um, you know, are we gonna charge them the same, you know, tho- those fees or is that gonna be waived and then? That's a that may be a significant number, somewhere in the ballpark of, I don't know, twenty to thirty. Thirty-five percent of the of the population of the students uh, may fall into that category. And and that may skew the numbers. And I guess my my bottom line point is with getting this as at, you know, at this point in time. Um, I don't feel like I have enough information to uh, to to give you a a go-ahead uh, for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase. Uh, it it it, you know, just just don't feel like I have it there and and maybe in another week or something like that, I I might. But I think there's more discussion that that needs to happen. That's my, thank you.
Ms., I I wanna keep going. So Ms. Seamus.
Yes, I just have one question. Um, I was just thinking, um, are we thinking this is an investment that will outlast the pandemic? The other question was answered.
Um, I believe so, yes. A- as I said earlier, um, a- as we look at this, I believe. A lot of things are gonna change going forward in how we do this. And and I'm not sitting here saying Phoenixville, you know. Is going to be a virtual school for all, you know, that's certainly not the case. Many people are gonna be brick and mortar. And I'll certainly let Dr. Fegley or Dr. Whitehead speak more to that fact. Um, but the reality is a lot of things are going to change, like, you know, and I'll just go way out there and say, snow days. Honestly, if everybody has that, not a thing to worry about anymore. Kids going away on on trips, kids being sick and so forth, not really a thing to worry about anymore. Well, um. For their health, maybe yes, but as far as their schooling, I don't mean to make it sound like that. But as far as their schooling. You know, that will will stay lockstep. And I think some of the things we learned, and I think it was a previous board member or board meeting, we. If I think it was the first virtual board meeting, I recall one of the student representatives making the comment. That this really worked for him. He really liked it. And and I think what we're trying to prepare for as well beyond the pandemic. Is that group of students that feel, hey, I was forced into this to take a look at it and this is working for me. So as a district, do we wanna send them away or do we wanna make sure that they stay with our curriculum? Under our banner, exploring and and using our services and our sports and so forth. So that's also one of the things. So to your question, yes, I think this outlasts the pandemic by a long shot.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Goldberg.
Yeah, I guess I have a lot to catch. I have a lot of catching up to do because I have a state I've been gone for ten days and I haven't. Had a chance to read up on all the emails. I just showed up, I just showed up back home forty-five minutes to an hour ago. So. I clearly have a lot of catching up to do with what the state, what the state has given us. Um, I'll try to get to that tomorrow. Uh, that being said, I I share a lot of Mr. Weiss's concerns. Um, Mr. Gibson, that's a pretty big outlay. Um, I don't know, I don't know a single one of either one of my daughter's friends that doesn't have their own laptop. Um, I'm sure there are plenty of people out there, but I am concerned with asking them what they feel like doing versus telling them. Um, what we're going to provide them if they have it or they don't have it. Um, just because the kids don't want to use their personal laptop because they have games on it, is not a reason for us to make this a a a big of outlay as we. Is is being is being proposed. Maybe you're right, uh, and maybe we do need all of these, but I don't wanna assume any of that without really without really uh, looking into it. Uh, a little bit more deeply. Uh, if I I, there's plenty of things that we require kids to come to school with. Um, we don't make it necessarily optional based on what they feel like bringing, showing up with and what they don't. Um, I I wanna find, I I'd like to figure out a way to uh, have them bring their own stuff if they can. If they don't like to, that's that may just be too bad.
President. President Emanuel?
Thank you. So two quick um, things to throw out there when we're talking about um. Considering now, or I should say just before the close of school and to tech to technology versus moving forward. Perhaps. The first being that there were many households with multiple children. Who may have received some laptops, but it might not have been enough for all of the children to have a laptop. A friend who has four kids, the district was generous, loaned loaned two, they had one. There's still one child who doesn't have access to their own device. So that's one component. The other component is that I'm guessing that this is a smaller component, but. For families that accessed online during this time, did through who did through through a desktop. Did through, who did through through a desktop. So if they had, they had a computer access, but it wasn't a laptop that they could bring to school. Imagine that's a small number, but just food for thought. And then the last two points, um, briefly touched on it, but I wanted to, uh, Mr. Weiss. Had brought up and I had made notes that I wanted to bring it up as well. Um, sharing that there are absolutely discussions for those who cannot afford. Whether it's free reduced, whether it's sliding scale, this absolutely could and will be a burden to some of our families. So ensuring that we are working with our community partners and different organizations to make sure that we are providing those services to all of our students. Because quite honestly, I I understand your point, Mr. Goldberg. The reality is, is no, not everybody has access to technology. Not everybody has a laptop at hand. Very quick of their own, et cetera. So we need to make sure that we are providing for those students that do not have that access.
Well, those people I wanna provide access to, those are the people I'm talking about.
Gotta wait your turn, Mr. Goldberg. Thank you.
Dr. Serini.
Well, quick comments, um, could we, I guess, how did we come up with the two thousand in terms of? Our needs analysis and if we, you know, potentially could we do a survey and just find out what the the needs are and hear from our. Um, constituents. I also think with regard to the settings in terms of firewalls and whatnot. Um, potentially, we could take the model of car seat installations and maybe have a timeframe where. Parents can bring uh, the devices in and uh, we could have staff on hand for those who have their own and are willing to. Forego the, you know, the district providing one, um, but they would need assistance with setting up the laptops for safety. Perhaps we could consider a model like that. Um, but I I would like to know, you know, what the needs analysis was that we came up with, what data we used. And if if we don't have a survey, if if we could consider a survey. Um, and then again, just, you know, if in terms of the uh, firewalls, the limitations. If we have best practices and then could maybe even offer to um, help our families who would be willing to use their own devices. Thank you.
So as far as, as far as a needs analysis. We, we didn't do a a super in-depth needs analysis beyond what we did with the registration, what our experiences in this current several months were. Which is one of the reasons we didn't go out and buy more, we didn't plan to buy more than than the two thousand. Uh, where did we come up with the number? We looked at what the the projected enrollment for next year was. Um, the the flexibility and some of the points I'm hearing that that we're planning on. And how would we deal with that? And how many more machines would we actually need to buy? Is that other two thousand or twenty-one hundred? So we have forty-one hundred students, we're looking at buying two thousand machines. We know that's gonna cover a a X number, an X factor of students. We have, still have that other half that are inventory of varying ages. Um, but that will give us time as a district to say, do we need to buy a thousand more? Do we only need to buy two hundred more and the rest to to some of the points I heard out there with BYOT or what have you? We, that will be satisfied through them. Where we know already, looking at the numbers that we have, the folks that registered, we went into Skyward to see how many laptops did they, did they get? How many children were there, were in their families and and so forth. We're, we're pretty comfortable with at least the number we bought. Um, and and to the point that some of these kids do have machines at home, that's absolutely correct. They do have some of those machines at home. Um, but the, I I I don't, many of them don't want to bring them to school. And and it's not a want or don't want, it's a matter of the family, you know, they invested an X amount of dollars in a laptop. Do I, I didn't expect to have to take it to school or I wouldn't have bought them the one I did. I I'm not gonna be the judge of that, but but it is what it is. To to Dr. Serini, final point to the the folks coming in perhaps, uh, you know, us working with personal laptops. We tend to avoid working on people's, uh, folks' personal equipment. I have no idea what's on that. And and that's just leading the tech staff down a hole that could potentially blow up ours. And that's why.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Goldberg.
Yeah, I was actually agreeing with, Blake and I, Mr. Emanuel and I were actually agreeing with each other. I I'm also worried about the the same students that don't have access as as Blake is. Um, it's who I want to protect. It's, but what I consider the majority, the majority of kids that probably already have the technology. Um, so, uh, in a, in a, you know, in a, in a, in a way, or not, we're essentially agreeing with each other. Like, I I I think, um, and. We don't know yet how many students are going to choose the option of regular old school every day, do we?
We have a sense of that now, Mr. Goldberg. Um, it looks like seventy percent have been coming in saying from our surveys. That they want to have in in school, be in the building. That said, what we don't know is how much will be allowed to be in the building yet. And that's our, that's our greatest challenge. So we have ten percent that want pure virtual. We have twenty percent that are saying they're not sure. And we have seventy percent telling us that, yes, I want to be in the building. Those building kids though are going to need technology because, as you can see, the numbers shifting and the sands moving now. We don't know that we'll be able to have them in the building every single day.
But those, assuming we, you're right, we don't know that, but is it safe to assume that those kids that need, that even that seventy percent? You indicated that seventy percent is gonna need technology as well. Isn't it safe to say that they also need a technology this past year as well?
They, not for the reasons we're talking about right now.
Oh, I get that, but um. I understand that, but when you say seventy percent of the students are gonna want to come in and we need to provide them tech, we need to make sure they have technology to come in. You could say the same thing about the students two years ago, only changed the number from seventy percent to a hundred percent.
And that's part of the reason why we had all the laptops all around the schools. We had two thousand laptops around the schools. Because we had teachers saying, I need the student to have a tech, piece of technology every day in order to work. Uh, when I was talking with the science teachers in the spring, actually, early, early spring, way before COVID hit. So it may have been winter, actually, at that point. They were hoping that we'd be able to find a way to go more towards technology for all, even then. Because of the programs that they were using at the secondary level. Now, again, we're talking secondary level there. Um, and that's part of the reason Mr. Gibson is looking for the machines that will cover the secondary students. If you notice, he has about seventeen hundred in there, that's for seventh through twelfth grade. The three hundred machines are for the kindergarten folks, if I remember correctly, Mr. Gibson. Because those are the smaller machines, less powerful machines. So we agree with you that we need less technology at that end. We need, and we need a smaller keyboard for them. And then as we make the transition, we have the machines that are currently in stock that will be able to use primarily with the elementary folks.
Yeah, I I I agree with what you're saying, but, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good.
I agree with what you're saying, but there is one very glaring difference between now and then. Then we weren't looking at a three hundred something, that's three hundred something thousand dollar outlet.
Well, actually, according to Mr. Gibson, and I was going back and looking over the time. We had been outlaying, because we've been purchasing the machines, somewhere in the area of two fifty to four hundred thousand dollars per year for student machines. We're moving it to a lease, so we're trying to keep it within the same realm. We are also to try, gonna try to go out for grants. We submitted for a few grants already. Mr. Gibson, actually, before this meeting, met with PCF to sit there and work to see how we can sit there and work with them. Especially with the students who are free and reduced, so that helps with what Mr. Emanuel was talking about. So we are looking at multiple ways of coming up with these funds. But it is within the realm of the budget. Now, this year, frankly, to be honest, we had a little less scheduled. I think we were down at the one twenty-five to one sixty range when you broke out Mr. Gibson's budget, but I may be wrong on that, Mr. Gibson. But I think that's what was for student laptops this year. So we do have to make up that difference. But I think we can do that primarily through the grants, through PCF and some other areas. So that's why we're not going for the out and out purchase. We can't afford to do one point two nine million.
No, I I I agree with that, but I also, I'm, of course, I don't wanna, I wouldn't want, the outright purchase concerns me as well. But so does overpaying for lease. And when I say overpaying, that, I mean, just because it's a lease, there's only, just because it's a lease and it saves money, is not a hundred percent consolation to me. Um, if, uh, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, um. I wanna provi, I wanna provide where we need to, but I don't want to be duplicative, um, and, you know, give all these kids, uh, uh. If they're not necessarily needing it, and I don't need is relative. Um, you know, extra laptops just because they, it's because they, it's because they want them. Um, I think you need to have a more, more of a selective process than that somehow. I understand Mr. Gibson's in a tight spot. I'm not, I I get that. Uh, I understand that we're under, under uh, uh, time constraints here.
I apologize for that, but these time constraints are just killing us, along with every other district.
Mister, real, real quick, to Mr. Goldberg's point, Mr. Gibson, what was the cost of, um. Of the interest for the lease purchase? Um, what's the difference in costs? Um, that may help Mr. Goldberg answering his question.
Sure. So the, the added cost for doing a lease over the term of the forty-eight months was seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, again, I I will.
Is that a year or total?
No, that's total. Um, again, I'll, I'll reiterate to to the point that, um, that. Remember, with doing a program like this, we're actually going to get a return on some of that investment. Something the district has never experienced before. To Dr. Pagli's point, you know, annually, we put out an outlay of money to to purchase new carts, update, out, outdated equipment, et cetera. And then it, we use it for five years and then we recycle it. And then we do it again. And and that's always the way it's been done. Now, I I, when I said that the future kind of, this is gonna change the way we do things. I think from an investment standpoint from the district, um, we, we make a purchase like that. The the homeowner or the the parent has a little input and and into that as well. And it, and it almost becomes a team effort, if you will. And and while a lot of people out there do have technology, and this is something, I've been doing this for over twenty years now. And and the one-to-one discussion has always been out there. And it's, and and to your point. That has always in this has been my, my absolute concern. There's, I never saw the reason, why am I buying technology for somebody that might already have it? One of the things this allows us to do, and I agree with you a hundred percent, but this allows us to, A. Have that flexibility because we have that other half that's still inventory and we get to see and and adjust what those future purchases are. Um, and we have to remember the technology here too. Again, back to that one-to-one versus what we're looking at. One-to-one, you know, I could do, if I'm just doing it for a night, I could do it on a phone. I could do it on a tablet or something like, and get me what I need. Because I just need to read some content and then come into class and have a discussion. But we're talking about providing almost akin to a full virtual when the student is not here. And I'm saying they're not here for a hundred ADs. But, but when they're not here. So the level of technology in that regard matters. It needs to be able to run the software. And again, I think when you look at this over the long term, we actually, as a district, end up going to a program like this. We will spend less money on technology and I think give kids more uh, going forward, looking at it from this realm. And having that flexibility for a year out, six months a year out, for whatever percentage of kids say, you know what, I do want to do BYOT. Great, we don't have to buy that percentage. But this need, but this is a purchase we need to make to get this off the ground and and move this forward. But, okay, great point.
All right.
Okay, um, Ms. Reed, your hand was up. Are are you, you put it down? You're good? I'm assuming yes. Um, Mr. Weiss.
I'm fine, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, ju- just two things, um. Is there any consideration to phasing this in as opposed to doing this all in one big bow wave? And let me, let me finish for a second, you know, where where the curriculum. Um, for certain grades, let's say, minimize the uh, the extent of technology. Or keep it at the current level of technology. Um, so that we can kind of phase this in. I mean, this is, this is all on a, on a budget and a tax year. Where revenues are seriously cut and and expenditures are not being cut enough to offset. Um, and and I definitely understand that reserves are low. Uh, so I'm, I'm thinking, you know, is there a way that we can look at this where instead of buying? The two thousand or leasing the two thousand this year, we lease a thousand of them this year, uh, realizing that. Certain grades will get by, well, we'll kind of have to get by with the technology or the way we we've gone for the last year. And 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 secondly, um, with the recommendation that you have. Uh, there of the, of the lease of two thousand, does that change the, the administration's recommendation? For the tax increase from one point eight seven to something else? Uh, or is that going to be absorbed somehow magically in in there?
I wouldn't call it magically, it will be painfully, but it is being absorbed. And again, we had about the hundred and fifty thousand or so set aside to buy laptops, so we're actually talking that difference of a hundred and fifty. And that's why we're going out to the PCF and the other places to work on grants to try to cover it. As best we can.
So it wouldn't come out of any of the reserves or any of the other places?
Not the goal of having it come out of the current reserves, no.
Okay, thank you.
Could it come out of some savings that Mr. Gibson had to do on printing and electricity? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, no, and 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 I had talked before many times about unexpected savings being placed in a reserve. And I definitely see uh, this expense for for the technology saying, okay, we had a savings over here. This, we had a, an adder over here and and we moved, you know, the the funds accordingly and and appropriately. According to all the rules and regulations. But, yeah, definitely can see that, but wouldn't want to necessarily have, have a significant hit to the capital of reserves. Like that, uh, if if we go forward with this.
That's not the intent. The intent is that we do it out of the operating monies that we have.
Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you.
Um, I had a couple of questions, but I'm gonna, so I'm just gonna tell them all because I do wanna keep moving forward. We're still not halfway through this agenda. Um, one of the things I want us to keep in mind is that, you know, there has been talk of going one-on-one for a while. Um, it's something that I think it was a lofty goal that that I think we, some of us had had. I I know certainly when, you know, that was one of the things that I wanted to achieve, um, when I decided to run was improving our technology. Um, and at the time when the discussion was, was had about it, they're just, it just was, it was very costly, right? And um, and the idea was always to look for grants for it. I think now, um, this pandemic has made us realize how important it is to go to one-to-one. Um, you know, in talking to other school districts on what they're doing during this pandemic. It seems to be that the ones that have had one-to-one technology have had a leg up. And um, it's been, you know, they, they've expressed how grateful they have had to have the techno. I'm sorry, give me one second. You're loud. Sorry, loud kid. Um, you know, that they had the technology. I know, I believe Great Valley is the, our closest neighboring school district with a one-to-one. Um, and they use iPads. I'm not sure what they use for the, for this pandemic. Um, I leave, at least that's what it was when I looked at it a couple of years ago. Um, so that's something that I want us to keep in mind. Another thing I wanna bring up is the equity issue. I know, um, there's been a lot of talk about equity lately. There will be, continue to be a lot of talk about equity, given, you know, the climate and things that are being brought up. Um, amongst schools and districts. And this is a way of closing that achievement gap. Is making sure that kids do have access to technology and they're all learning on the same pace and the same, same type of scope. And one of the things is, you know, in in during this time, it's, I think, you know, it's easy to see what students struggled. Um, which ones might have been behind, not having computers at home easily accessible to them. I think kids that are fortunate, I don't wanna use the word fortunate, um, but kids that do have access to laptops at home. Um, you know, this might have been an easier transition. I I don't know. I'm, I'm thinking that it might have been an easier transition for them. That compared to those that don't easily have access or don't have that much experience using these type of computers. So I think this will be, in a way, it would help them and in the students that may not have had that. And working towards, you know, closing that achievement gap, giving them that experience to have these laptops. So those are just my thoughts on that. Um, the other thing is that we don't know when this pandemic will end. I mean, I know, you know, there's talks of a vaccine within twelve to eighteen months, but none of that is set in stone. I mean, everything's been speculation. A lot of things here, it's, it's an ever-changing climate when it comes to this thing. You know, we, you know, we're slowly reopening. Some places have had to close again because of the increase in illnesses. And so it's, it's such a question mark. It's really hard to know how long this is going to last. And I just want us to keep that in mind in the back of our heads. The hope is, yes, that we do get a vaccine, the quicker the better, please. But we don't know that. And I don't want these kids to fall behind. I think that already, um, you know. There, there are parents that I know that have struggled with this online learning and trying to make this fluid. It's, it's gonna be a challenge for us for the year. So I think having the laptops brings us, you know, one step ahead. Um, another thing was, um, if, if this isn't going to, um, change the percentage of what the budget increase can be. Then I think. the percentage of what the budget increase can be, then I think that's a good thing. I think, um, I know we talk about cycling the laptops constantly and um not from not this vast of an amount. But I think given the circumstance that this may be something that we need to consider, um, just because it's just a wiser, a wiser investment, I think, right now. Because next year is such a question mark and we don't know what's going to happen. And we don't know if we'll be, if, you know, schools are going to be running fluidly without any issues. We don't know if we're going to close suddenly. Um. And we need to be prepared for that. And um, I think that's all my points. Um, the last question I had, I did have a question about the parent survey that went out. I don't, I did the survey, but I don't recall if there was a question on whether or not um on there about families needing a laptop or do they need more than one laptop or something like that, if that was on there. Um. And when will we get the results of that survey? But I guess it's not really relative to the topic, so that's fine. Um, yeah. And the last question, are these computers light in weight? Because I I, you know, I think about a kindergarten and carrying a laptop. Is it going to be lighter or maybe the ones for high school are a little heavier? I don't know. But that's also something I I want, I had a question about. And my last, sorry, my last last question is, will parents have a chance to purchase this laptop if they cycle through it? That's it.
So answer to your question, let me start from the end first and go back and then tell me if I missed anything. Um, because I thought about three quarters of the way through. Shoot, I should be writing these down. So my apologies for that.
I was waiting.
So, uh, yes, actually, one of the reasons we looked at the the dollar buyout at the end versus when we looked at different types of leases, there's two two types of leases. One is fair market value, where we turn them all back in at the end of five years. And the other is a dollar buyout at the end. We looked at the dollar buyout for exactly that reason. Perhaps there, you know, so a parent puts in two hundred and fifty dollars over the course of five years. But you know what? Let's say that student took really good care of it. The laptop's still in really good shape. Um, and and they want to keep it and and go on with it, or they have a son or a a younger sibling that that may use it. Yeah, maybe we offer it for sale to them, you know, for a hundred dollars or something. Or yeah, I I'm just throwing numbers out, so please don't quote that. Um, but so that's, you know, we're still early in the stages of that. Uh, going further back to your question on likeness and so forth, yes, that's one of the reasons, you know, not only for the smaller keyboard, uh, for the smaller kids, uh, is is the weight of the laptop. The, you know, but but just as, but just as important as we've seen over the years is the size of the keyboard for their little hands. Putting a a little set of, you know, K through two hands on a on a full sized keyboard. It's just, you know, they're having a hard enough time with their dexterity and typing passwords and so forth. The last thing they need to do is be stretching those little fingers that far to get across an adult sized keyboard. Um, and and these laptops are also coming with uh like clamshell cases like you would have on your on your phone, you know, you'd say you put an outer box case on your phone. So each of these laptops in that price is the laptop, the cost of the insurance and the clamshell case that they'll each have. Uh, that it's not a carry case that you strap over your shoulder. It's almost like on your on your cellphone, that that hard case for dropage and so forth to help protect them and make sure they get a good longevity out of it. I I think your other things were just points, not necessarily questions. I think I got your questions.
Yeah, the rest were just points. I just wanted to give my thoughts on it, basically. Um, you know, on that. And um, Ms. Reed, I see that you have your hand up. I don't see it up anymore. So I think she's.
She's talking. She's muted.
Oh, okay.
You're muted, Ms. Reed.
Can someone unmute her? Oh, we have, there you are. There you go.
Thank you. I am having issues with my laptop. I would like to make a motion to approve the lease purchase.
Is there a second?
I will second it. Um, but I I I thought this would be um for next week.
Mr. Gibson had asked that it be approved this evening if possible.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'll second it.
Discussion. Hearing crickets at this time, I will take a vote on the motion to approve the um lease of technology. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
I was trying to raise my hand, um, Miss Emanuel, and he jumped to, you didn't get my thing. I I would like to do roll call vote, please.
Fine. Uh, Dr. Whitehead, would you please do roll call?
Okay. Mr. Calvert Jerome. Yes.
Miss Emanuel.
Yes.
To Goldberg.
I had to step away, so I don't know what the vote's on.
The vote is approval to purchase technology for all for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. It was asked to be approved tonight.
The lease option, Mrs. Soto.
Thank you for clarifying, Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Seamus.
Yes.
Dr. Serini.
No.
Mrs. Soto.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes. Reluctant.
Mrs. Broker. Mrs. Broker. Mrs. Broker.
Looks like she might have stepped away.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry. No.
Yeah.
My bad.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, okay, so I'm going forward. I'm I'm gonna move on with the agenda now. Um, thank you all for that great discussion, though I thought that was a really good discussion on it. Um, item D, um, number thirteen is approval of agreement with Lakeside Educational Network to provide educational services for up to five um P A S D special education students from July first, twenty twenty to through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Um, this item is for, um, I believe for three counselors, specifically up to five students. Um, I can't remember if they were five designated students or just five students in general for special ed. That I can't.
Mrs. Soto, we're actually uh reserving or or buying five seats, so it could be a multitude of different children.
Okay.
Right.
Perfect. Um, let me just make sure anyone, Dr. Serini, did you have a question on this?
You're muted.
I have several questions. Um. We we just voted on a three hundred and forty thousand dollar purchase, correct?
A lease purchase.
A three, three hundred and forty thousand dollars, correct?
Correct.
Two thousand computers. Okay, should do we, should this not have been listed? I mean, this you you know, as a new item, this was put in there and I I'm concerned. This, on the day that we're voting, we're how many hours into a, um, let's see. Almost still approaching three hours and we still have multiple um items here. This is a concern. And we still have a budget to vote on and we're, we just spent, you know, three hundred and forty thousand dollars without even and and do we have public comments? Are we getting any public comments on how how is anybody able to and and?
Doc, our, we've already passed the vote. I call a point of order to continue on.
Right. And things can be reversed if we're doing them inappropriately. I know you, you're you're our resident expert.
Called.
I'm in the middle of speaking.
Order was called and therefore.
They're always calling, but I'm in the middle of speaking.
If if somebody calls a point of order, per Roberts rules, that point of order is acknowledged by the chair of the meeting, which is myself. I have, I agree with it. We are continuing on with the discussion of the agenda items.
Okay. Um, all right. Um, does anyone have questions on number thirteen on um the people's services agreement? No, okay. Number fourteen is approval of two extended school year agreements with Valley Forge Educational Services from July sixth, twenty twenty through August seventh, twenty twenty. Um, I don't think I had this on here um from before. Mr. Fazio, could you elaborate on this?
Um, Mrs. Soto, I can't. Um, these are extended school year for special education students. These are specific placements that are required by their I E P. The um extended agreements just came in. Since we're not voting on them tonight, we wanted to get them before the board so they could look at them tonight before voting on them next week.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Um, and I guess if anyone has questions, that would be under executive session?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And real quick on discussion items, I will just review real fast because um I just want to keep this um agenda moving. Uh, we did discuss a Phoenixville Hospital update and the um depositions had been rescheduled due to COVID. So there is no update on that one. Uh, we spoke briefly about requests for proposals um over insurance service providers, our auditor, which we do have right now um on the agenda. Um, and there was talk also about um talking about how to approach uh the solicitor. So um, that's probably going to be the next item that we'll be putting out R F Ps for. But uh, we still haven't, I don't think we've solidified exactly how we're going to do that, but there is talk of going for R F P for solicitors. Um, we touched on healthcare reserves. Um, currently, I believe, is only two months of healthcare reserves in there. And um, there was talk of of, you know, of whether we increase that um for the budget. And um, there was also discussion real quick about um the Keystone, the Real Estate Tax Collection um Office. Um, Keystone usually sends a rep. I believe it was Keystone that sends a rep over to do the taxes, but because of COVID, um, they don't have the staff to do it. So um, we're talking about maybe putting like a box or something where people can drop off their tax uh paperwork. And I think that's really it. Um, yeah, that concludes my report. I don't see no hands up, so we are good. All right.
Great, thank you. Next item up is the uh policy report. However, uh, Mr. Goldberg, um, having just got back from vacation, we are going to defer that until next week. Those items are online and any changes are in red. So folks can review that prior to the meeting next week and we can delve further into policy next week. Next up is the Board Secretary's report. Ms. Broker. Ms. Broker.
I'm sorry. Having some technical issues. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, okay. Um, yeah, it's um just for approval of um these minutes. Um. At long last. So. That's really good.
And if anybody has any questions, they can um email those um to Ms. Broker. Thank you. And now we are at the um budget discussion. So this is not, this is updating, finalizing our discussions regarding the budget. And then we will vote on the budget under new business, but this discussion component. And Dr. Fegley, Mr. Fazio, I don't know who wants to take it away.
I'm going to let Mr. Fazio begin. I'll get the PowerPoint up for you, Mr. Fazio.
Thank you, Dr. Fegley. Um, Board, thank you. Um, this is uh the culmination of about nine work, nine uh months of board administration work. Um, pretty comfortable. Um, it it the uh, the budget stands at ninety six million, one hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, that's the expenditure side, obviously met with uh an equal amount on the on the revenue side. The uh, the ninety six million dollars in expenditures is less than a two percent uh increase um from uh budget to budget. Actually, it's a one point seven six percent increase in uh expenditures. Uh, I I I want to underscore the accomplishment, I I think of by the the principals, cabinet members, the board, uh, the three to eight hundred objects that you the non-salary and benefit portion um relatively flat. Um, a a significant increase in budget to budget uh in the uh benefit area. Um, and obviously, the contractual increases on salaries. So from a expenditure uh perspective, uh probably as tight of a budget as as uh realistically possible. Um, we lost nearly two million dollars uh in revenues because of uh the pandemic. And uh, that's the area of concern. Um, you know, um, the revenue portion of the budget, the expenditures, I I think administration is comfortable uh that we've addressed the educational needs um that we're aware of. But as we discussed in the past, um, and even tonight, uh, the uh we don't know what we don't know. Uh, things are evolving uh monthly, weekly, uh sometimes daily. And uh, but we're moving forward and I think we're moving forward in a great way. Um, the uh, the tax increase, um, you know, there was some discussion about a can we keep it under two percent at at one point nine nine? That would bring us in approximately eighty. Somewhere be, uh, you know, depending on uh, you know, the payment options chosen, probably somewhere between seventy eight and eighty two thousand dollars of additional revenue. Um, we would put that in our contingency fund. Our contingency fund, uh, you know, has grown from uh, you know, what we had said in in May, our our presentation from two hundred thousand, it stands now at um, just shy of uh two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, about two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Um, all the savings, all the uh changes. Um, and if there's uh, if there's adjustments, we'll we'll certainly add to that. Um, but um, but that's uh, the administration is asking for the board's consideration. There's a number of tax revolute uh resolutions um that go along with that. Homestead, farmstead exemption increased slightly this year, but albeit by two dollars. But it's a uh every taxpayer there's uh that submitted a homestead, farmstead application. Uh, there's eight thousand, three hundred and sixty six um taxpayers who who qualify for that. They get a reduction of a hundred and sixty seven dollars and this year fifteen cents um from their uh taxes irrespective of when they pay it. Um, legislation, I think Senate bills twenty four eighteen and I don't know what the House bill is. Um, still no direction on the extension of the discount or face period um and or the elimination of the penalty period. Um, but that's still uh, that's still being discussed and and um and contemplated in Harrisburg. So those are the highlights um or lowlights depending on your perspective.
Thank you. At this time, the double check that I have my um thing open. But um, for those who have questions or comments, this is the time. Um, we will then move on to new business items. So. Now I can see it. Apologies. I couldn't see the when the hands were being raised because the screen was shared. So this time, if anybody has questions, comments about the budgets now, now is your time. Mr. Weiss.
I just wanted to make sure that it was the admin, uh, the administration recommendation of one point eight seven. Since that graph shows a number of different uh potential tax increases uh that just want to make sure that that hadn't changed.
Uh, one point eight seven uh is um what the administration is uh is I I want to say recommending, what we were hopeful for is if the board was so inclined. Um, as mentioned by a number of board members tonight, reserves um are a concern uh in building up those reserves. So um, there was uh, there was um uh discussion or or a suggestion uh of a one point nine nine percent tax increase. Um, yeah, that would a again bring in eighty, about eighty thousand dollars more that we would put um in our contingency uh fund, but um, but that's, that's where we are.
Thank you.
The other comments are. The other comments are questions. Just want to make sure that we get this through this so that when we move on to the voting item, we're not reopening. Ms. Broker?
Yeah, I just wanted to I guess I just want to make sure that we're that we're really using all of our available taxing authority. You know, when I read through the municipal law, the Local Tax Enabling Act, there's just, there's so many different there's so many different categories that I, you know, kind of came as a surprise to me. And, you know, the amusement tax, I did talk to Mr. Fazio about this before. You know, that's still valid. It's still on the books. It hasn't been overruled. And, you know, when he I'm just trying to think of ways to build revenue. When you think about already people are, you know, at First Friday, and this is an arts and entertainment destination town. And we get, you know, huge numbers of people. That seems like a tax that would be able to kind of shift away from our residents to, you know, people who come here to party and whatnot. There's that one. I mean, there's several.
You're absolutely right. There's one there's one small tax in the borough, local service tax, LST tax. I think all all of you pay that, that reside in the borough. It's a $52 tax. You'll see it on your paycheck. It's usually taken out in January, February by your employer. The townships collect that, Schuylkill, East Pikeville in the borough. The district can share in that tax, albeit by only $5. But we would need to pass, we could do that potentially in January, if you will. So there's no increase in taxpayers. It would be a revenue shift from the municipality to the district. It would bring the district in approximately $60,000. Keystone collects it for the three municipalities. That's a source of revenue if if the board was so inclined. I'm just aware of that because in my previous district, you, it was a very similar tax and and the district implemented or took their share of it. I believe Phoenixville had this, whenever it was implemented, Phoenixville did not opt to do that. And I don't have the historical background on why not, but.
I mean, do you know about, I mean, I'm looking at number I'm looking at 13 amusement and admission tax. And I'm looking at I mean, there's several there's several that are for businesses that do delivery into
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to call a point of order and keep this on the budget. These are great ideas, but this is not the time. This is a budget discussion that we do need to pass by, if no later, by the end of the month.
But I'm but I mean, you don't think that's relevant to the budget that we could perhaps be
We can't do that by the end of the month. Yes, that's wonderful to do. We can't do that and count on it by the end of the month.
So at this point, what I would ask Ms. Broker is if you would please, this is a great, this is great information for finance for them to delve into further. If please aggregate the questions and suggestions that you have and get them to Ms. Soto, the Chair of Finance. That can be brought up in a future finance meeting for further discussion.
Okay, definitely. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Sorry, I was having trouble. That was an accident.
Just kidding. Right, thank you. Are there any further comments or questions? Being none, we will move forward with our agenda. And the next the next items are board representative reports. And I'd like to straw poll the board members who have reports. I'd like to ask that we postpone this until next week if there's nothing that is urgent simply because of the hour and that we still need to finish up new business items. We have an exec session. So Mr. Caltergeron, myself, we know where I stand, Mr. Weiss and Ms. Reed, do you mind if we defer these until next week?
No, thank you.
Nope, I'm good with that.
Thank you so thank you so much. Dr. Fegley, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Emanuel. Jump. So I'll keep mine very, very brief. Just so folks are aware, and this is really on the current status, our enrollment has remained pretty much the same. There have been very few changes in that. What will be interesting is our enrollment as we move forward. Right now, I would ask anyone who is listening, please, if you know of a family that has a kindergartner and they have not yet registered for kindergarten, would you please ask them to register for kindergarten? We're trying to get our count. Right now, we're not that unusual, but we, because every district in Chester County is down somewhere between 25 and 60% in their kindergarten count. We are in that about 27% range, but we do believe there's many, many more out there, and we would like to try to make sure that we have all the proper staffing ready to go for the start of the year. Quickly, last week, PDE and PIA gave some initial guidance on sports. That was for youth, school, collegiate and professional. Still need to hear a little bit more from PIA. We thought we would hear today, but last time I checked, we hadn't received anything. Because of all the changing things, as Dr. Whitehead said earlier, we are going to keep reevaluating what we're offering in special education programs. MDS program is going to open up in building. But given that PDE just issued guidance last week, before we can open up the MDS program, we must submit to you as a board a pandemic program, preliminary pandemic program, but a pandemic program and how we'll make sure we keep the students and staff safe that are coming in. We are looking to have that for you by this Friday, so you can look it over this weekend and then hopefully approve it. Please know that this pandemic plan will keep changing. There's just no other way of looking at it. At the last session, we did have a superintendent's chat and it went really, really well. There were fantastic questions. As we said earlier, Mr. Caltergeron, there were 250 people who signed up. We actually hit our limit on how many we could have in there. So we're looking at expanding our system and we're going to look at putting it on social media. I'd like to thank Mrs. Claus, Mrs. Emanuel, Dr. Whitehead and Dr. Kilmetz for joining me on that session. It was really, really a fun time. And our next one is scheduled for June 25. Just so folks know, starting on June 22, all 12-month employees are going to be back in the building. We have put out guidelines for how to re-enter the building, make sure masks are being worn. And July 1 is our target date for beginning summer school with students back in the building. This kind of leads us to some really major thank yous very quickly. First, thanks to the PCF. They're together to We Can Fund. They've raised over $70,000 to help feed students and provide technology for students. So thank you very, very much. We've also applied for over $100,000 in other grants to help feed students and their families this summer. We're waiting to hear the results of those applications, but we're hopeful that we'll see up to $100,000 more to help feed students. And just so you know, today we had two great donations. Let me share my rights, proper screen, so I can show that to you. Take me a second. Come on. Here we go. First, we had a group from the Tana Group. They came over and they donated $1,000 towards the district's efforts to provide meals for all students. They have also done a number of other donations with other school districts, but really like to thank them for coming together, donating $1,000. The young man in the orange shirt to my left, he is in the Early Learning Center. So he is one of our students that was helping raise these funds. The other students were from Downingtown Area School District. That's okay. But, you know, they were very, very nice and a really wonderful time today. Also today, PA COVID-19 Makers Group donated 1,600 face shields for our teachers, aides and bus drivers. They're also sewing 1,300 masks for our free and reduced lunch people. Overall, this group has donated over 7,000 masks to healthcare workers. We are the first school district to receive this help. I'd like to thank all those in the COVID-19 Makers Group. And if anyone in the public would like to make a donation to help support their efforts, please go to pcfonline.com under the Together We Can Together line, and together we can make a difference and help keeping, make sure that everybody is safe. So thank you very much to everyone. Thank you for all people are doing to really show Phoenixville as a true community. That's my very quick update. Wanted to keep it as short as I possibly can, Madam President.
Appreciate it. Thank you. So moving on, at this point, we are looking at our three
Looks like there's some hands up, from what I'm seeing.
Yes, I just wanted to make this one quick announcement, and then I will get the hands. So we have these items. I did, I neglected and I apologize for this, to do public comment prior to the vote on the technology piece. So after we listen to the public comment, we can do a straw poll to see if individuals would like to change their vote. That was my mistake and I apologize. We'll come back to that in addition to doing the items. Now I'm going to go look at Okay, hands still up. Mr. Goldberg?
No, I thought we were going to go, I thought we were about to jump into the budget discussion, so I was trying to get a head start with my hand up.
Noted. Mr. Weiss?
Before we get into the budget discussion, I wanted to thank Dr. Fegley. I wanted to thank the principals. Wanted to thank Mrs. Rockwood and especially Mr. Fazio for all of the work, all of the efforts, all of the different angles that they looked at. And I know sometimes it doesn't sound like I appreciate it, but I really do appreciate the amount of hours and the amount of work and sacrifice that those individuals did. And and Mr. Fazio being the focal point for that, that in my opinion, did an outstanding job. And I just wanted to thank all of those folks.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
I just wanted to confirm, this is the first year where mandatory schooling starts at six, is it not? So if you were thinking of keeping your child home until age eight, that's not how it is anymore. And I don't think that anything has happened because of the pandemic. So if you're thinking of keeping your kindergartner home because you don't want to send him or her to school, you can still have the virtual online option, but they need to be registered. Thank you. Is that correct?
That's an excellent point, Ms. Reed. You are absolutely correct. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Ms. Soto?
Real quick, amongst these new business items, well, I guess I should wait till we get there first and then I can make my motion.
Correct. Thank you. So at this time, Dr. Whitehead, I will actually ask you to read the public comments that we have received thus far prior to us taking motions for the three individual items. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have three public comments. One came in in a different email, so I'll have to change over. First, it's from Lisa Longo. Phoenixville Borough, Dr. Whitehead, please try to speak more clearly and loudly. It can be difficult for the public to hear the exact comments. The discussion of a tax abatement is not a negotiation. It is a resolution of the board and deliberation which must tax, which must tax place in public. Tax abatements have been discussed numerous times in the past, always in finance, and then at workshop before public vote. Negotiation and executive sessions are to protect sensitive information. A alerta must be discussed and deliberated upon in public. This is yet another example of a lack of transparency and board members being misled on proper operations. Hiring a business office staff member at a salary that will likely cost taxpayers in excess of $200,000 when you add in benefits and pension seems excessive, especially since we still have not had an opportunity to review internal controls and forensic audit that taxpayers paid to have done due to possible embezzlement and diversion of district funds, both allowed under the current administration. Until there is a thorough investigation and review, there should be no hiring at this excessive rate. And the entire report of alerta is out of line, considering this happened in secret. It is inappropriate. There needs to be a public hearing on this issue before any vote is taken. Prior boards rejected continuing the alerta, as did the borough. Screen share does not allow the public to clearly see the entire document. Again, I ask that before any vote, a public hearing be held on this topic. The public deserve to see the details and hear a full and complete detailed discussion and have the opportunity to comment on the public record, especially given the fact that the budget is so strained and there is zero element of affordable housing. This is entirely inappropriate and the opposite of what our community needs at this time. Very grateful that Mrs. Soto expressed these concerns, but again, the entire conversation should have happened in public and then we would have all been aware. It's extremely inappropriate that this happened in an executive session. The board needs to stop allowing this sort of background deliberation. It is not okay. And it is the school district that has the final say because we approve the borough ordinance as the ordinance taxing authority, not the other way around. Also, on the issue regarding audit firm, RFP and selection, the board should interview and meet with the auditors. The audit firm reports to the board, not the administration. This should have gone to the finance committee and the firms vetted, not by the administration, but by the board. Question regarding exit interviews, this is not micromanaging to review. It is actually part of the superintendent's evaluation. This point was put to specifically be reviewed by the board. To be clear, the idea that there should be board consensus, but also very strong best practice is that requests by individual board members should be respected. The board was not elected collectively and each member
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. This should be a part of the audit overview. Internal controls and finance policy, normally this would be discussed and reviewed when the audit reports were reviewed. The fact that this did not happen is cause for additional concern. And very important, prior workshop meetings allow for public comment after each committee report. Moving ability of the public to have real-time comments during the workshop is another way transparency can be undermined and very that concludes. Next public comment is from Mrs. Karen Guerrero from Schuylkill Township. Why Dell laptops aren't iPads or Chromebooks cheaper? And the last public comment. Thank you, Mrs. Soto, for saying that. This is from Mr. David Lutzker, the president of the Phoenixville Green Team, Borough Resident 243 Morgan Street, to the board. I had been in touch with President Emanuel about doing a presentation to the board about the Green and I intend to pick that dialogue up again in the very near future. In the meantime, things have developed in an additional direction. A group of clean energy advocates in the region have come together to form a group. The Phoenixville Area Clean Energy Alliance, PACE, which representatives from all PRPC municipalities, Phoenixville Regional Planning Commission. We have been conferring informally for a year to discuss how to support the clean energy resolutions that have been passed in the regional townships. With the PRPC's blessing, the PICA is developing a draft proposal for a grant from the Chester County Planning Commission's Vision Partnership Program. The deadline for submission is late September. This grant seeks to advance the county's landscapes, free vision and specifically includes environmental and community sustainability, resilience and energy conservation as a category for plans and studies. We are also looking at a strong public outreach component, including school districts, industry and extensive use of digital media. The intention is to move forward towards using renewable energy throughout our communities. Grant will fund a study for what the next steps would be for the region to accomplish that goal. Our schools are bedrock, quote unquote, for our communities and would be an important focus of the study. I will be in touch with President Emanuel about how to engage the board on this important topic. And that concludes public comment.
Great. Thank you very much. Looking forward to hearing from you, Mr. Lutzker. And Dr. Fegley, did you want to speak to the I think we covered a little bit with the why specifically Dell's. Mr. Gibson had stated that it is, one of the factors was that it is currently a system that's supported and we have very strong access to tech support through Dell. Do we want to add additional comment regarding Dell's versus Chromebooks or iPads and Chromebooks?
Well, iPads and Chromebooks, we agree, they are less expensive, but they do less and they don't support all the apps that we have. In particular, they don't support our LMS, our learning management system, and that was a huge factor in our decision-making process. In addition, without keys on a keyboard, we found it to be rather difficult to type paper. Yes, they are laid out on an iPad.
Yes, they are laid out on an iPad and you can make it, but you're having additional pieces. So, by the time we looked at it, we just felt the need to go with a higher level machine in order to make sure everyone had equal access.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. So, at this time, we'll move on to the first business item, which is approval of the 2020, 2021 General Operating Fund. And I know Mr. Goldberg was anxious to have his hand up, so I'm gonna call on him in advance and hope that I'm calling on him for the right reason.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to go with a 1.99% budget and to earmark the extra funds specifically into reserves. I think it boils down to approximately, I think the difference was approximately $5 per family, per household, rather, for the entire year.
There's second?
Second the motion.
I would like clarification.
Clarification, Mr. Goldberg.
To clarify the motion, when you say the excess, you mean the percentage difference between the 1.87 and the 1.99, correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's, thank you, Laura. Thank you, Ms. Reed. That's exactly what I meant. Whatever, it's, it's, it's a relative, it's a relative small amount, but it's something rather than nothing. The difference between 1.87 and 1.99 is to be earmarked specifically for the use of, to put it into the reserves.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions on the motion?
The medical reserves?
Discussion on it?
Someone? Did, Ms. Seamus seconded it. We're in discussion.
All right, so let me go raise my hand.
Oh, Mr. Weiss, I think you.
Yeah, I think it's a very nice gesture, but I, I, I still think that we should go with the recommendation of the administration, which was 1.87. And I'm thinking about the taxpayers that are on fixed incomes. I'm thinking about the taxpayers that are on low income. I'm thinking about, you know, the vast majority of different types of taxpayers out there that although it doesn't sound like a whole lot, a whole lot of money when you say $5 a month, to some of these families, I think it's, it could make a difference for them. I think that there will be some, some discovered savings during the course of the, the next coming year that will exceed the $80,000. That's my personal opinion. I don't have any, you know, factual analysis to support that. But I believe that, that there is, that that will be the case when we get back here a year from now, hopefully in person. But I, 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 I think that we should, I don't know if it's a modification to the amendment or just don't vote, vote for it, but I would rather see us go for the 1.87, which the administration obviously feels that they can live with and of course, the more is, is more comfortable. I'm trying to balance the education of children, which is the first priority and a very close second is the community and the tech space to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Soto.
Um, the, quick, quick off the top, because I don't have it in front of me. How much of this is going, how much is the plan to put into healthcare reserves? Do we know off the top of our head, Mr. Fazio?
We don't have, we don't have any, any specific amount designated for any reserves at this point. Nothing in the budget. There's the $267,000 contingency, but no transfer, no transfer to our reserves.
Okay, Mr. Goldberg, you had stated that you wanted this to go into our general reserves or was it like, or did you want it to go to a specific reserve, like the healthcare reserves?
You're muted, Mr. Goldberg. Hold on one second. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
All right. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. But before I answer that, I just want to point out first that Jerry, it wasn't $5 per, per month, it was $5 per year. So, for each household, it's only, it's $5 for the entire year, actually, not $5. So, it's not 70 bucks, it's $5. And to answer your question, Giselle, I'm talking about general reserve, but of course, once, once it's in the general reserve, we can move it, we can essentially move it into wherever we want, any of the, we can move it into whenever we, wherever we want. I would just ask that it be put in the general reserves and if it is moved anywhere, we can move only to another reserve.
Okay, so that contingency that, Mr. Fazio, that you're speaking of is technically the general, right? 260,000 or whatever the number was?
Yep, but, but we could designate $80,000 to be transferred to the, to our reserve. So, there would be a specific line that we wouldn't be able to touch. We wouldn't be able to use within a general fund. It would be designated to be a transfer to healthcare reserves, general fund reserves, capital reserve.
I was talking about, I was talking about starting it out, just, just put in, put in that, anything over and above the 1.87 into general reserves. And then being able to, being able to move it around wherever we needed it, with the caveat that it could only be, it can't be, can't dip into it for anything else.
Yep.
And then, Mr. Fazio, if maybe you could just speak real quick on what, so we have two months of healthcare reserves currently now. What is the total of what that is?
Give me 30 seconds. I had at the, I had that at the.
1.7 or 1.5?
Well, it, it was, it was very close there. I'll get that in.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I just wanted to say it publicly. But, um, but my concern is that, you know, taking $80,000, like ideally, I would, I, I would suggest make a motion to take the excess and put into healthcare, but $80,000 doesn't feel like it's gonna be that big of a dent. Um, I do understand Mr. Goldberg's point of view of where, you know, we do need to have some extra money set aside, but, uh, but I also understand the struggle of people right now on a fixed budget. You know, I, I am comfortable with the 1.87. I do, you know, I, I do think that grants and, and looking for additional funding is gonna be very key for us to survive next year. No matter what number this ends up being, I think that, you know, we just, there's so much unknown for next year that we need to prepare ourselves as much as possible. So, I'm more of the mindset of sticking with the 1.87, even though I, I, the 1.99 seems, seems like a good, but I just don't think it's enough of a dent. I think regardless, we're gonna, we're gonna need to come up with money bigger than $80,000 to get through next year. That's just my personal opinion. I mean, don't quote me on anything, but that's just my fear because I don't know what next year is going to bring. So, I know I'll be pushing for as many grants as we can get, but, um, but yeah, that's where I stand on it. Sorry. Okay.
Thank you. Ms. Reed?
I just, I have a problem with the, the wording of the motion because that assumes that we receive, if we were to raise it 1.99, that we would get all that 1.99, where then we're talking about a specific dollar amount. Does that, does that make sense? Because if we don't receive, even though we're raising, if, if the taxes do increase 1.99%, we might not get that 1.99% and therefore then we're moving money that we don't have to the reserves. So, it's, it's more, it's not, I understand Mr. Goldberg's point, but I don't think that that's something that could be voted on in that manner because I don't know if we'll get 1.99% even if we, even if the budget were to be increased 1.99%.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what you mean by we may not get it.
People may not pay it.
Well, we could do, why don't we make it, why don't we make it 50%?
No, that's what I'm saying is instead of a percentage, it should be a set number.
I, I don't think you can do a set, well, I mean, I'm not an economist, but I don't think you can do a set, I don't think we can vote on a set number of a tax increase.
No, no, to move to reserves, not the increase, the reserves.
Well, we won't know what that number is unless we use percentages.
So, let me, may I please try, what, if I'm hearing you correctly, Ms. Reed, what I'm hearing is you would be more comfortable with a motion that stood as a 1.99 increase with up to 80,000 or, I don't remember the exact number, 78,000 going into reserves.
Right, because if we're short, let's say we're short 80,000 on what comes in, we would still have to move that 80,000 that we were anticipating but didn't receive. Does anyone?
I, I don't, I'm sorry, it's not that I don't, I want to understand, I just don't, I don't understand this distinction here.
So, I think that, and Ms. Reed, please correct me if I'm wrong, I think the concern being we're not sure what returns, what those revenues will look like depending on if folks default, if they pay late, different.
Know our collection.
We don't know ultimately what our concrete number for collection is. So, while we might have voted on a, hypothetically voted on a 1.99, if it ultimately ended up coming in at 1.87, we would then have to take 80,000 out of what we received. Does that summary one match up with what you're saying, Ms. Reed? Two, Mr. Fazio, does that, is that a concern that you have? Or is that something that, that you can speak to?
I would be comfortable, I mean, someone discussed it, we could designate within the budget that $80,000 be transferred to our, our future health claims reserve, which stands at $1.1 million currently, 1.127. So, you know, the caveat there is, is if we don't need our revenue budget and we overspend our expenditure budget, you know, you know, we would be in a deficit position, but that's, I don't anticipate that. But, but if that would occur, then we wouldn't make that transfer at the end of the year, would, it just wouldn't occur.
We'd have to make the transfer because we voted on it, correct?
Correct. You know, but what would happen is, is we would probably have to, to balance the budget. You know, we would have to, you know, pull from fund balance, which is essentially reducing our, our reserves.
So, I would like to reach conclusion on this one item prior to moving on to the next comment. The way that it's currently worded, is it feasible if we don't get enough money? It still seems like there's a little bit of a hole here. It's late and I apologize, I'm.
The only way I can think of it is, you're right, we don't know exactly how much we'll get at a 1.99 versus a 1.87, but we will at the end of the year know this is the total amount of dollars that came in and therefore we can figure out what that 12% is. Well, if we make it one, if we, if we vote on 1.99, whatever the amount that comes in, whether we're short $5 or we're short $500,000, we will know what the difference was between 1.99 and 1.87. That's the, that's the money we would, that's the money that we would earmark.
Yeah, I mean, that, we know what that number is. I mean, the, the difference, you know, right now budgetarily, I mean, we're multiplying the millage rate. You know, millage rate at, at 1.87 would be 31.78 mils. The millage rate at 1.99 would be, you know, slightly higher than that. That differential equates to about $80,000. So.
I mean, yeah, it, which, I don't, I, you know, I worry about trying to operate a scenario into it. And Ms. Reed, I understand what you're saying, but I worry about operating a scenario where we try to project what we may, how much, how much we may or may not get. You can, you can say the same thing whether we tax 0.1% or 45%.
Well, absolutely. I'm not, I'm just saying maybe we need to say a fixed number instead of a percentage.
But the problem with a fixed number is, it doesn't, the fixed number doesn't.
Okay, okay, if someone knows, I just want it clear, that's all. I don't, I mean, I just, if it's gonna be a motion and I'm gonna vote on it, I want it to be clear to me and to everyone.
No, I'm not, I want to understand what you're saying because maybe that I don't see something. I'm just disagreeing with you at this point. Yeah, I.
The original motion was for any amount above the 1.87 to be put in reserve. So, doesn't that actually, now that I'm thinking about it, cover this concern?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay, and it took me a while to get there. I apologize. But it's the above component that we're discussing about putting in and therefore it does protect us should we not reach the 1.99.
Okay.
That's what I've, that's what I'm inartfully trying to say, Blake. That's, you said it better than I did.
Okay, thank you. I didn't under, I really didn't understand.
No, I probably could have worded it better, better. That's on, that's on me.
So, any receipts over 1.87 will go to reserves?
Exclusively to reserves. And again, I want to stress that we're talking about $5 a year. I know you guys already understand that, but this way, if someone asks me next year, did you put anything towards reserves? I can say, yeah, I put something towards reserves. Now, I'm hoping there will be no follow-up questions like, like how much, that would be great. But this way I can say, yes, I put something towards reserve. My answer will be as long as there are absolutely no follow-up questions, then yes, yes, I put something in reserve.
Thank you for that. Dr. Serini?
So, I just have a question. I don't think it was answered, although I think we touched on aspects of it. I'm trying to understand if we vote on the, when we vote on the budget, which aspects can we tweak or change? Is it, I, I think Mr. Fazio said there was something with the general budget, but I guess my question is, if we are mid-cycle and we find that we need to shuffle things around or just juggle, what, how many millions do we have to change midstream of things that we don't know what we don't know at this juncture occur and we need to reset?
You can change, you can't change the budget, total budget amount, but you, we can come back and sit there and have discussions over how we're going to spend different portions of the budget.
Perfect. Okay. And is that related to a particular line or fund or is it just across the board?
It'd be across the board, but the further you get into the budget year, the less flexibility you have. That makes sense.
Because funds are allocated.
That's right.
Got it. Okay, that, that's helpful because I feel like we're in certain areas making decisions without a whole lot of information, but knowing that we have the ability to reset and just confirming it is, is encouraging. Thank you.
Ms. Broker?
Yeah, wait.
We can hear you.
Oh, God, did it again.
We can hear you, Ms. Broker.
Oh, you can. Yes. Okay, I just want a couple of things. First of all, I don't know, this might require an advanced degree in economics, but I mean, do you think there's a certain point at which you've reached sort of like a critical mass where if you get to, you know, 1.99, you'll have that many more appeals? You know what I mean? Like where you start to lose money because you're at a sort of a, not a sweet spot, but a sour spot. I guess I'm just throwing that out for just general consumption. And then the second thing I wanted to just, I just wanted to throw this out that I, I know in TE, they, well, they went, they went full 2.6, but what they did to kind of help the taxpayers is they canceled or they allowed for the disc, the 2% discount to go all the way to the end of October. And they also waived the penalty for late payment through like summer 31. So, I'm just throwing that out as, you know, possibly a way to, you know, soften.
Listen, I have a motion on the table. I'd like to limit it to, I'd like to limit it to a discussion.
I apologize. Oh, oops, I'm sorry.
I, I like to limit it to the discussion on my proposal.
You are, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry. I'm out of line.
Well, I don't want to go that far, but thank you.
Mr. Counselor Jerome?
To Mr. Goldberg's point and to this whole 199 versus 187 issue, the bottom line is, and what I, what I've heard through this conversation is that, at least what I think I heard, Mrs. Broker is asking if the 199 is going to create more delinquencies than the 187, which would thereby lower the amount of taxes that we will take in, and thereby lower the overall tax revenue, rendering the amount that we take in in total short of the budget that we set, and therefore there would be no additional funds, regardless of whether we set it at 187 or 199. And I think if I heard Mrs. Reed's and listening to Mrs. Reed's points, I think that's where she was headed. And forgive me if I'm, I'm speaking out of turn on that, Ms. Reed, but if we don't hit our revenue projections, we're taking, but by, by supporting this amendment, we would be taking anything above 187. Any of the, the funds that come in that are above the 187, we would automatically be taking it out by passing this amendment. And I think that's probably putting us in a difficult bind to earmark that. I mean, I, I think we would be better off saying any amount above the budget, that the, the amount set for total revenue and, and the total budget should be allocated to reserves, not taking it from the percentage, because quite honestly, we're dealing with projections across the board at this point. Regardless of whether it's 187, 199, Mr. Fazio, correct me if I'm wrong, but all of the revenue that we're talking about right now is projected revenue, what we hope is the best case scenario, given what we think is going to happen in an unprecedented situation. We don't know what, what we're going to be seeing revenue-wise. So by proposing this amendment and saying we're going to take anything above 187 and put it aside, we don't even know if we're going to hit our revenue projection yet. So I would suggest if we're going to make an amendment, it is that once we hit our revenue number, that anything above and beyond that number that pays for the budget be the amount that gets pushed into reserves. And I'm sorry if that was inartful at 10:35, but hopefully that was as clear as I can make it. And Dr. Fegley, I saw you shaking your head at least once, so I think I was on the right track.
I believe so, yes.
Clarification though, because I kind of feel like we're all saying the same thing. Because 187 is the proposed budget, so that is the expenditures and the hoped revenues. And then that 199 then is, the difference is what is extra potentially. I don't know, Mr. Counselor Jerome, I, I don't know.
Maybe I misunderstood.
35, I'm sorry.
Maybe I misunderstood the 199. If, if we're passing, if we're passing it at 199, that suggests that we're raising the, the millage to 199, unless I misunderstood that.
That is correct. So that, actually, it does become the new budget, but the proposal is that that money difference that is raised goes into reserves.
Right, but, but again, that's to my point that we don't know at this point that we're even going to see that additional revenue above and beyond what we've projected at the 187.
Correct, and that was Ms. Reed's concern. Right, right. I think we're all saying the same thing. I could be wrong.
Yeah, and that's why, and that's why I'm, I'm concerned about this amendment in and of itself, the way it's worded. And, and I agree with Ms. Mrs. Reed on that. I, I, there's something about the, the 187 versus 199 that because it's not based in the numbers, what it's, what it's forcing us to do is take that money that comes out of the difference between 187 and 199 and put it into reserves.
But that's the whole, but that's the genesis of the, that's the whole point here. Now, that's what I want to do. I want to make sure that it can't be touched for anything else.
And you have to put it in some category anyway, Mr. Counselor Jerome. So we'd have to put it, you know, to, you always have to have a balanced budget. Whether it ends up being balanced or not is always another question when I, you know, I say that because we're never going to raise that exact amount, no matter what.
Correct. And that's what's concerning me is that this is unprecedented waters that we're in and we're, I don't know, it's, it's just concerning to me.
Sir Weiss?
Okay, no, I got the buttons right. I actually like what Mr. Counselor Jerome was, was saying, and maybe one way to look at that is to look at what the projected revenues at 187 is and say, anything above that level becomes into what Mr. Goldberg was saying, into that reserve. But I, I did want to clarify one point that Mr. Goldberg said. He wanted to make sure that he could tell these constituents that he puts some money in reserve. And correcting Mr. Fazio if I'm wrong, but as it stands right now, the, the $267,000 that is in contingency is basically in reserves. So if everything else stays copacetic, we would be putting $267,000 into reserves with the 1.87 budget. Didn't want someone to have the impression that 1.87 had nothing going into reserves. So I just wanted to clarify that. And if I'm misspeaking, I assume Mr. Fazio will correct me.
No, the, the $267,000 is undesignated, is, is purely contingency funding. And it is not earmarked for anything. It's just, you, if we have it needs, you, we would pull from there.
If the needs were in the health area or in the capital area, those, those funds would support those, those areas, I assume.
The problem is that those funds, the problem is that those funds are very paltry. That's the whole, that's the idea here. I'm sure, Mr., I'm sure Mr. Fazio, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, would probably enjoy us putting more money into, into reserves. This is our opportunity to do that. And I agree, Mr. Counselor Jerome, that it is maybe unprecedented here. It's not unprecedented. It happens elsewhere. Earmarking, I think, for a particular purpose. I, I recognize that it might feel somewhat uncomfortable because we're not used to doing it this way, but doing it this way has gotten us to the reserve problem. Doing it, doing it the way we've been doing it has been, has put us into the reserve problem that we've been having for years.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make the point that we weren't going to be putting nothing into reserves. That money was for, was, was money that is not earmarked for anything right now in, in the, in the current budget, which is why I want to earmark it. Okay.
So I think right now we're actually starting to circle, we're starting to circle the drain a little bit. Dr. Serini, I want to give you a chance, and then I'd like to move forward if nobody has anything now.
I don't recall what my question was, because I've been sitting here listening for so long. So I, I actually, you know what, my hand was probably raised from last time. I don't think, I think it was addressed, so thank you.
Okay, so seeing no further at this time, we are voting on a motion to increase the percentage to 199, 1.99 raise with additional monies over the 1.87. Going, Dr. Serini, your hands up.
Roll call, please. If that's, that was what I was going to ask, if we could do a roll.
Got it. Yep, noted. 199 with additional monies over 187 being earmarked for contingency reserves.
Specifically for contingency.
Apologize, what was that?
Specifically for.
Specifically earmarked specifically for contingency reserves. Dr. Whitehead, could you please do the roll?
Ma'am?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can we have a word such as collected in there? Do we need an amendment, or is this still clarification of the motion?
Let's, I don't know.
I'd like, let me withdraw my motion and redo the motion with the word collected in there.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That works well. Go ahead, Mr. Goldberg.
1.99% rate, there, any difference, any difference between 1.87 and 1.99 collected would go, would be earmarked specifically for reserves.
I'll second.
Okay, and we did our discussions, and now, Dr. Whitehead, would you please do a roll call?
Uh, Dr. Roll, Ms. Emmanuel?
Yes.
Mr. Goldberg?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Seamus?
Yes.
Dr. Serini?
Dr. Serini, you're muted.
No.
Ms. Soto?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
No.
Ms. Broker?
You're muted, Lori.
Broker? No, okay, I'll take that as a no. And Mr. Counselor Jerome?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, we will move to the budget. Now, instead of with the 187, it will have the 199 with that amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 general fund operating budget with a 1.99% increase?
Second.
There's a lot going on there.
I didn't get that.
It was, I, Mr. Goldberg moved, and then I believe I heard Ms. Reed seconded.
No, but someone seconded.
Mr. Counselor Jerome, I think moved, and either Ms. Reed or Ms. Seamus seconded it in the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. And now discussion on the budget. Anybody? This time we will call the vote on budget. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Nay.
Oh, sorry, what was the last one?
Opposed.
Dr. Serini was opposed, okay.
Opposed.
Oh, Ms. Broker. Abstentions. Motion carries. We will move on.
That is a 6-3. Thank you.
Okay, second approval item is the approval for payment to Wolfington Transportation Services for Act 13 compliance. This was discussed at a previous finance meeting. Dr. Fegley, did you want to give an update on this one?
Wait, did we skip on number two?
We, we have to go back, yes. We have to go back, Ms. Emmanuel, and make sure we get number two and number three, so we get the homestead approval and the tax resolution approval.
Oh, my agenda's wrong. I apologize. I have number two as the payment for Wolfington.
I apologize.
That's, that's my mistake. I must have printed out an old one. Would somebody please read off number two on one that is not?
Approval, it's up on the, it's up on the screen, approval of the 2020, 2021 homestead and farm rebate exclusion. This is that we can give the rebate to taxpayers as approved. And then the approval of the 2020, 2020 tax resolutions, these are the levies that just support exactly what you voted for, but they do need to be voted for separately, or they do need to be voted on independently.
I apologize. So do I have a motion for number two, approval for the homestead and farmstead exclusion?
I'll second it then.
Ms. Reed was, made the motion, and Ms. Soto seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Approval of 2020, 2021 tax resolutions. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Counselor Jerome, motion, Ms. Reed seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Now on to number four, which was my number two, just kidding, approval for the payment to Wolfington Transportation Services for Act 13 compliance. And, Dr. Fegley, did you want to speak to this as well?
Just very quickly, this is what we had discussed in last week's executive session, the negotiations that had been underway for Act 13 compliance. Act 13 required that school districts negotiate with the transportation contractor. One of the questions from the board was, are we sure that we're getting all of our written notifications, submissions that have to be in there? If you read through this particular agreement approval of payment, they're required to submit to us everything. Now, we did it this way because just in case the legislature goes back or PDE says, no, we really wanted this, and you thought it was that, we want to make sure we can get whatever documentation we need in order to satisfy PDE. So we wanted to put something extra in there to make sure we got any of the notifications that were required by the, by the bus company to us. So we made sure we've covered that, but we have everything that we need to up to this point from what we understand. We just need, weren't sure of our, we just want to be clear that we're going to make sure we get it no matter what. This amount is approximately 49% of what they had asked for initially. So I think it was a good negotiations. Most places are going from 55 to 65%. So it is administration's recommendation, after having this contract, after having this reviewed by legal, that we approve it this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Broker, comment? You're still muted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just confused because I remember talking about this and, you know, do we, have they been filing every week those reports?
Submitting. What we want to make sure is PDE may change what they require. We want to make sure we can get any and all documentation from them necessary to submit to PDE.
Okay, I guess I'm still a little confused.
So we under, from what we know, they have submitted everything appropriately. What we want to make sure is, PDE changes their mind all the time as to what it is. By writing in what we wrote into this, they have to submit whatever documentation we require in order for us to submit to PDE.
Understood. So, so heretofore, up till now, you have verified that they have submitted that weekly report that's required by law.
They have been, they need to submit in, that's my, yes.
Yes, so we have, okay. And, okay, because I had wanted to come in to look at those, and, you know, it's, you know, it's hard because people aren't there a lot, you know, because it's very clear about what, what they need to do to be eligible. So, okay. It's, their fixed costs are, they're fixed costs. And the idea that it's being, just, you know, thrown out these round numbers suggests to me that we're just negotiating without actually having them verify the actual costs. Especially if it's so up and down, it's so all over the map with other districts. It, you know, are we sure that that's, that the amount that you've negotiated, is it actually what those reports add up to?
Yes, as best as I can tell you right now, Ms. Broker. Yes, as best as I can tell you right now, Ms. Broker, we we have worked hard with the attorneys, we've worked hard with them in order to come up with the figure. The best I can say is yes.
Are those documents available?
Prince. Micro managing.
No, it's not micromanaging. Sorry, it's not micromanaging, please.
Stop. Broker.
I had, yes, last week, to look at it. This is a lot of money, we're on a shoestring, I just.
We we will have everything available if folks want to look at it, yes.
Okay.
And we will follow what the law says and how the agreements are written, yes.
Fine.
Dr. Serini.
Jesus, thank you. Just because there seems to be some hesitation and uncertainty, could, I'd like to make a motion that we defer a week and just have a chance to look at this and, you know, add it to the agenda for next week.
I hear your motion, we need to get a second before there's any discussion, is there a second to defer?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
I mean, if there is no.
It just seems, I, yeah, I mean, I I hear hesitation in Dr. Fegley's voice, I I feel like people are late, it's weary, I mean, I don't. I don't want to, I'll, let me finish and then I'll I'll give you the floor. Um, I I just want to, you know, it's late, very late, and we're making major decisions and what difference does it make if it's a week? I I, you know, that's all. I I, Dr. Fegley, I wouldn't want you to affirm something with the, you know, hesitation or reluctance and then find that there is an error and I understand Mrs. Broker's point and, you know, can we just wait a week?
So my hesitation is only because I'm trying to make sure I answer the question properly. And I believe I have and there's, I'm I'm fine with this negotiations, I've, it's been going on for some time. It was finished this past, last week, we finished it, you asked me to make sure we would get all the documentation in. It's actually in the agreement saying they have to submit everything. I'm trying to be so transparent to sit there and say if PDE changes it, we have the language in there to get whatever PDE requires in order.
But I don't think that's what Mrs. Broker, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Dr. Fegley, I don't think that's what Mrs. Broker was asking. I I heard her ask and I think we asked last week to seek to verify that they have submitted it. And so do we have it or not, I guess?
Literally, I said yes. I said, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion, call the vote, please.
Second.
Second.
So this motion is simply to call the vote on Ms. Broker's motion to defer for one week.
Ms. Serini, Dr. Serini's.
It was Dr. Serini, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember, okay. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
No. No.
No, I don't.
I think I have a six three.
I don't.
I mean, a three six, three yays, six nays.
That's what I came up with.
Oh, so sorry, I'm exhausted. Are we voting now or are we still?
Nay was to not defer. So now it's time to vote on the Act thirteen.
I'd like to amend my.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we do need to pull back on that because Dave made a motion to call the vote. That was, that's why I'm confused.
And I'm confused too, it's like you said, you're tired and that's my whole point of why I'd like to wait. We're making decisions and contractual obligation.
I'm sorry, Dr. Serini, we are trying to get through, we are in the middle of sorting out a vote, so that does take priority. I want complete clarity because I do think that uh, there may be misunderstanding and somebody please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that Dave's motion, or excuse me, Mr. Goldberg's motion was to call the vote, so we had to vote on that first prior to actually voting on the item.
Correct.
Correct.
So that.
Okay, correct. I was calling the vote on Dr. Serini's motion, the mo, uh, Dr. Serini's motion has failed and now we're on the underlying vote. That is correct.
Roll call, please.
So, okay, so we're we're back to number four.
That's correct, we're back to voting on Act thirteen, the Act thirteen now.
Yep. Okay, so we are going to do a roll call vote on Act thirteen. We, I thought we did, um, Dr. Serini's motion get pulled on?
It failed. It failed. It failed.
Okay.
Okay, I'll now call the roll on the Act thirteen Wolfington. Ms. Reed.
Yes, to approve for payment.
Ms. Seamus.
Yes.
Dr. Serini.
No.
Mrs. Soto.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Broker.
You're muted, Lori.
Yeah.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear her vote.
I said no.
Uh, Ms. Mr. Calvert-Derron.
Yes.
Ms. Emmanuel.
Yes.
Mr. Goldberg.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now on an item number five, which is the approval of an addendum to the contract for transportation services with Wolfington for the term of July one twenty twenty through July, June, June thirty twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a move.
And we're going with Ms. Soto for that one, do I have a second?
Second.
I'd second.
That was Mr. Calvert-Derron. Dr. Serini.
I, I think that was up from before, sorry.
Ms. Soto?
So I just want to add that this um, contract with Wolfington, um, even though it's listed for in through twenty twenty five, um, it is, um, technically, we can always like switch if we have to. Um, Dr. Fegley, do you want to clarify in that real quick or Mr. Fazio, just that we can have some clarification for people?
So there are two reopeners to the contract, one December of twenty twenty and the next one December of twenty twenty one. So the board so wishes, we are able to go back, we are able to go out and go out for bids from other companies. Or Wolfington, ask them to lower their prices.
Is that yearly or just for the first two years then?
Yes, for the first two years.
Okay. Done, done.
Seeing no further comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Final voting item number six, approval of memorandum of understanding with CSW Wheatland LP. This is the MOU regarding the LERTA that we had um, previously discussed. Does it have a motion?
I don't know.
Oh, I think that was Mr. Calvert-Derron, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
That was Dr. Serini and Ms. Soto.
Um, I wanted to make a motion to pull this for for next week. Um, I want to give time for the public to be able to review this, um, just because, um, I I don't feel like there has been enough time.
Let me, let me do the motion first and then we can do the cut, the discussion, thank you.
Sorry, okay. I will make a motion to um, hold off on approval of the memorandum of understanding with CSW Wheatland LP until next week's voting meeting.
I'd second it.
I think that was Ms. Seamus seconding it, now discussion.
Okay, so I I want to give time for the public to chime in on this. Um, they, you know, are seeing this presentation, I mean, I know it's been a discussion for a while and Westrom did come and, you know, to discuss the finance for the tenure. Um, but I do think that it's important that the public has time to process this. Um, you know, we we just approved a budget and where we were, you know, debating on that five dollar tax increase because we know how tight our constituents are. So I think it would be um, be right to hold this off until next week, um, to at least have more discussion on it. Or at least let them chime in, sorry.
Dr. Serini.
I was just going to request a roll, roll call vote when we get to that.
Okay, any other comments on Ms. Soto's motion to postpone for a week? Seeing none, uh, actually clarification, Dr. Serini, did you want a roll call on both votes or just the vote if we make it to the MOU?
I I like to have for items of of this nature, a a roll call for uh, the the next two, but certainly in general, thematically, yes.
Roll call.
This is the motion to postpone, just to be clear. Ms. Seamus.
Yes.
Dr. Serini.
Are you able to come back to me or do I have to speak now? I don't understand why we go in different orders every time, is that?
It's fine.
It's fine. That's the roll calls are always called, there there there's reach, I have like seventeen different templates.
Yeah, they're right.
We need to carry on with the vote, so, okay, um. Yes.
Mrs. Soto.
Yes.
Mr. Weiss.
Yes.
Mrs. Broker. Mrs. Broker. Mr. Calvert-Derron.
No.
Ms. Emmanuel.
Yes.
Mr. Goldberg. Ms. Reed.
Yes.
We have six yeses and one no.
Motion is table till next week.
That will be added to our voting meeting agenda. Um, under new business or finance. Okay. Um, and then that brings me back to, since we have heard public comments, um, I am asking that if somebody would like to change their previous vote on the technology purchase, to please speak now.
Can you clarify on that just because, um, since it's been a while in case public.
Sure.
Um, what it was for.
Right, so this was the technology purchase for our, not one to one, but whatever we're framing it as, um, component to provide students with technology next year and ongoing, it is a lease, it's not a purchase, it's a lease. And um, wanted to make sure that public comment was possible, we have since had public comment, that was my apology. But I just wanted to make sure and so we are clarifying everything and allowing, should the public comment have changed how somebody wanted to vote, they have this opportunity at this point. Uh, Dr. Serini's hands up.
Thank you for the opportunity to to revisit our votes, President Emmanuel, in in the spirit of what uh, Mrs. Soto suggested a moment ago, I would like to make a motion to defer this vote for one week.
Is there a second? Hearing none, motion fails. So at this time, would anybody like to change their vote, to voice a change of vote? Ms. Soto, your hands up.
Sorry, I just wanted to, I was wondering if there was any additional public comments that came in, um, specifically regarding this.
There are none, no public comments.
Thank you, Dr. White.
Thank you.
Is this, is Mrs. Broker having, her things keep, her thing keeps blinking, is she trying to, it keeps going yellow?
She sent, she sent a message that she has to leave for a few minutes, I'm not sure what she meant by that. She sent me a text.
I don't have her, she's signed off right now, folks, so she's left the meeting.
So at this time, I'm not hearing anybody changing, they have had the opportunity for public comment. Um, and at this, we have public comment on any, on new business and any, um, any school topic, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Whitehead, in the last three seconds, we had any public comment come in?
There are, there is no public comment in the inbox.
Great, so um, while we had originally discussed moving to a, uh, this would be the point where we adjourned the meeting and we originally discussed going to um, executive session, given the very late hour, I am going to respectfully of my board members and administration that we consider maybe holding um, executive session before next week's voting meeting or um, I just, I am worried about the hour and everybody's ability to stay conscious. Um, so I, at this, would ask if somebody has an objection to postponing the executive session, please.
No objection from administration.
Sorry, I was trying to circle, I was trying to speak and we moved forward. Is it okay if I speak real quick?
Sure.
Um, I I know it's late. Um, regarding the that vote, did we have, the one for the technology, um, did we have to in, just invalidate the vote and then just re-vote on it? Is is that how, I just want to make sure we're covering our bases.
I believe we have by going back and seeing if anyone wanted to change their vote based off of the public comment.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're covering ourselves, that's fine. My my vote stands, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so administration is no object. Giving adequate time to see hands pop up from board members. Ms. Reed.
I just want to be sure there's nothing we're going to vote on with, that's going to be an executive session, you know what I mean? That's going to be brand new information for us to vote on.
Absolutely, and that's why my proposal is for before the meeting. Um, Dr. Fegley, if you could, I'm pretty sure that's the case, but Dr. Fegley, if you could remind me.
Okay.
Confirm for them, for us.
We will be looking for the voting items, there will be a student matter, which we will need to discuss with the board prior. And that, and there, I believe, a couple of questions on the personnel items that we will need to discuss prior. Perhaps what the board would like to do is have an executive session on Wednesday and something along that line so that we can make sure that the board has plenty of time to get their questions answered.
Okay, so in light of that, I mean, let's just, if everybody's all right with it, we can send out an email, look at calendars and just see what works regarding coming together as soon as possible at a, at a more reasonable hour, does that sound?
Thank you, yeah, I just don't want to not vote on something because we did have time to look at it, thank you.
Makes total sense and I appreciate it. Um, um, so at this time, um, we are going to not go to executive session.
Let me ask you, let me ask you, Blake, let me ask a question here, is is it safe, is it safe to assume that no one else, evening is the only time we can do this for everyone's schedule?
Yes, we have multiple members who uh, work a nine to five.
Yeah.
We can, we can send out an email with a couple weeknights and a couple times and see what works best for everyone. Or the majority at least.
Ready.
Thank you all, we are adjourned.
Thank you, have a good night.